The meeting of the City Council, come to order, clerk, roll call please.
Counselor Capone.
Here.
Counselor Del Sola.
Here.
Counselor De Florio.
Here.
Counselor Hanlon.
Here.
Counselor McGonigal.
Here.
Counselor McKinnon.
Here.
Counselor Palatano.
Here.
Counselor Sichetta.
Here.
Counselor Sani.
Here.
Counselor Simonelli.
Present.
Counselor MacAsie.
Present also. Stand and salute the flag, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic which stands on one nation under God and the living soul with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, read the first piece of business for tonight.
Mr. Chairman, if we could, an individual who was a member of the Library Trustees Board, Mary Downing, had passed away recently. Could we have a moment's silence for her?
Mary Downing. Mary Downing, if you'd like to just rise for a moment of silence, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Clerk, read the first matter before us.
Twelve parties interested in a petition for Comcast and Southern England Incorporated plays four inches of PVC pipe approximately 135 feet from pole 2548 located on the southerly side of Devon Street in a southeast direction and to the rear of 460 Broadway. Said location to be placed in accordance with plan entitled Petition Sketch of Comcast and Southern England Incorporated, Locust Devon Street Municipal Parking Lot, dated June 4, 2014.
A motion to invite the petitioner before us.
Make a motion.
I second that motion.
Motion made and second to invite the petitioner before us. All favor.
Aye.
Opposed, if there's a petitioner here from Comcast and New England, could you please come before us, just state your name.
So, Austin Comcast, Project One, this is to extend a four-inch conduit on that pole on Devon Street across the municipal parking lot to the rear of the church at 460 Project.
Counselor Florio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is to replace a pole. Now, what happens with the other pole? Is it a double pole or?
This is not to replace a pole, this is to replace the four-inch conduit.
This will be on the ground.
Oh, okay. On the ground. Okay. Thank you.
Do we have any questions? Counselor Hanlon.
Sir, you, Mr. Chairman, I'm reading this now. I understand you're going to be digging up the sidewalk, part of the parking lot and so forth.
That's correct.
When you repair it, is it going to be a permanent repair or a temporary repair?
It'll be a temporary repair and then we'll go back and make a permanent repair.
Okay. And like, when would that be? Let's say you finish the job 30 days from now and you do a temporary repair. When would a permanent repair be put in?
Usually 30 to 60 days within that.
Thirty more times.
Yeah. Because you don't want the trench to sub.
I understand. I understand. And also the same with the sidewalks?
Sidewalk, probably avoid the next day.
Okay, so be cemented.
Yes.
Thank you.
Are there any questions for the petitioners?
Will they be excused with the customary thanks, Mr. Chairman?
At this time, we'd like to start a, what you call it, the, at this time, we'd like to have the public hearing. At this time, I'll ask anybody out there who's in favor of this petition, you can speak for it. Anybody who's petitioned in favor, anybody else who's in favor of this petition. Seeing none, that part of the public hearing is done. Seeing anybody that's opposed to this petition? Is anybody opposed to this petition? Anybody opposed to this petition, our petition? Seeing none, that part is done. The matter's before you.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, thanks.
Second.
Action on the order.
Motion made and second for favorable action. All in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Your petition has been granted. Thank you. I noticed a lot of people here tonight and we, by charter, we have to do our public hearing first. We've got to do public hearings and we'll get to everybody, the appointments and everything, okay? Clerk, read number two, please.
Twelve persons interested in the petition for the Light Tower Fiber Networks of Foxborough, Mass. to install approximately 125 linear feet of one four-inch SCH-40 PVC conduit on Broadway sidewalks, starting at National Grids MH-253 and continuing along the sidewalk to 738, the building called Eastern Bank, to provide fiber optic circuit to this location.
The matter's before you. Petitioners present.
Can we invite the petitioner?
Yeah, motion made and second to invite the petitioner before us. If he is here, could you please come up at this time? Can Ethan state your name, please?
Robert Zach, I work Phoenix Communications, representing Light Tower.
Do we have questions for the petition at this time? Counselor McGonigal.
Yes, just exactly what are you doing down there?
We'll be breaking out of the electric company manhole that's located on the sidewalk in front of 740. We'll be traveling down the sidewalk itself till we get to, it's like an emergency exit to Eastern Bank and then we'll be turning into the building at that point. We're placing one 40-inch, it's called scheduled 40 pipe, it's a heavier wall pipe.
And what are you putting fiber optics in there for the bank and their communication system?
Yes.
I have no further questions.
Counselor Hanlon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Where exactly is the manhole 253?
It's, well, it's about 125 feet down from the side of the bank, but it's in front of, I believe it's a hair salon or it's seven.
That's going towards Everett Square?
No, it's going, yeah, down the side street, correct.
Okay, so would you be crossing any, I know there's a gas station there, would you be crossing any of their driveways and that kind of thing?
No, the only driveway we'll be crossing belonged to Eastern Bank and we'll, we have to take whatever precautions to keep the flow of traffic going since there is a tell machine in there.
I'm sorry, what was the address of it? 780, 738?
738, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor McGonigal.
Mr. Chairman, I don't, I don't have any questions for the petition forms, but I just have a comment to make. That will be before it's voted on.
Okay. Counselor Del Sola.
How long I think this will take you, start to finish?
We should be able to have the pipe placed, I mean, one day. Well, probably a breakout of a day and things go well, we should be able to get into the ground in a day and then to temporary restoration, you know, for settlement, then we'll come back and concrete the sidewalk. One of the things we're looking at is can we tunnel underneath the existing driveway entrance so that way there's less disruption. So, probably within a week, we should be able to have everything down and back.
What do you think you would start this, if you got, you okay tonight?
They're anxious to get going, so probably within a couple of weeks, I would expect. You know, depending upon there were no events going on, we might record.
You're leaving all detail for pedestrians to come down Broadway?
Absolutely.
Out in the street and go back again?
Yes, we can provide a traffic management plan, whatever is required by the city.
Aye, thank you.
One quick question. You're going to be disrupting the sidewalk, coming right down the sidewalk.
Yeah, we can look at probably taking the backside of the sidewalk, if you will, because it has double panels.
Yeah. And what will be repaired? Will it be repaired with the same material on there? Will it be some asphalt patch?
It'll be asphalt initially, you know, to get the sidewalk back, you know, at the end of work and then we would concrete the sidewalk appropriately to match as best we can with the existing is.
Do we have any more questions for the petitioner at this time?
Very good.
Thank you. Right now, we'd like to start the public hearing at this time, last three times. Anybody in favor of this petition? Anybody in favor of this petition? Anybody in favor of this petition? Seeing none, that part of the public hearing is over. Is anybody opposed to the petition? Anybody opposed to this petition? Anybody opposed to this petition? Seeing none, the public hearing is over. Counselor McGonigal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the motion, I did get a call from one of the business owners in that area. And I personally don't know enough about Light Tower Fiber Optics or anything, but I believe some of the businesses in that area are interested in having that installed. So, before I agree to issue this permit, I think whether you put it into committee or you hold off until at least the other businesses in that area can speak to these, this gentleman or the fiber network company that's actually doing this, if they can install it in their building also. So, two months from now, we're not calling, we're not having, maybe this gentleman come back before saying, listen, I need to dig that up again because here's this business that wants this type of network. So, I can't be in favor until the other businesses in that area are notified to see if they want it.
So, make a motion to send it to committee?
Yeah.
Motion for this piece to go to Committee on Community and Business Development. Do I get a second on that?
Second the motion.
Thank you.
Motion made.
Mr. Chairman, on the motion.
Counselor Hanlon.
I don't know what the urgency of getting this, this piece of equipment installed, but we put this in committee now. It may not get out until September sometime. I would rather see if we couldn't do something else such as asking the company to do that on their own. We grant the permit and then just to make sure that they do talk to those people and get some sort of a communication from them. I don't know what companies we're talking about or anything, but it must be the neighbors to see if that can be done. And if you can do that, then you could go ahead with the license because I think we should grant the license tonight, hoping that you would do that on your own.
Absolutely.
Without us getting involved in that way there, we wouldn't hold it in committee on you, you know, so.
Absolutely.
I don't know what the urgency of this is.
I will bring that back to Light Tower. I'm sure that they'd be, you know, looking for additional customs within the area.
And I know that we'll be in touch with the abuddas, whoever these people are, to make sure that that has happened, you know. And we can always withhold the license or stop it from going through to, you know, so. I don't want to use that as a threat, but you know what I'm saying.
Is there a certain distance that you're referring to?
If I may, through the chairman's.
Counselor.
There's a complex at 742 that's very interested in having this type of network put into, put into his building. There's a gentleman across the street. What I'm asking is that you give him the license this evening, gentlemen, he can just go ahead and dig it and never contact these, these homeowners. So, you know, I don't know how you want to word it, Mr. Chairman, but I'm just not in favor of it right at this moment until.
And we may propose some contingent upon hearing from these businesses that are interested, yes or no?
If that's, if that's okay with this board, then I don't have a problem with that. But one particular business developer in the city would really like to take a look at this while it's being installed, it's possible to go into his, his complex.
I mean, do we notify the petitioner of who's interested in it?
Sure, sure, we, we could. We could give it to the city clerk.
And have, and have some kind of.
Have them correspond with this developer.
To us, contingent upon them acknowledging whether they want to have it or not. Is that?
Correct, correct. I'd be in favor of that. I don't want to hold.
Counselor McKinnon.
I received the same call. I know that there's a number of businesses down in that area that are interested in this. So, I made a motion to send this to, to Committee on Community and Business Development. Are we going to change that motion?
Well, it could be three months setting them back. That's kind of, I think that if they could do a little legwork in this week, come up before so we could maybe sign something to.
Would that be possible to actually do that?
Yeah, if we could frame out how far out you would like us to, you know, try to identify customers, that wouldn't be a problem at all.
Okay. I'm going to resend my motion for Committee on Community and Business Development.
Counselor Del Sola.
I think we're going to find out if, if you get the manhole at point A and it go into point B of the, of the next location, if those businesses are not in between those two points, it would be a whole different project to go up the streets.
Yeah.
You're not going to cut into the same area where you're working, correct?
There's an existing network that exists from Light Tower that goes within the area. So, I think from the design standpoint, they would have to go back and look and see where, you know, where it resides in relationship to where the customers are and what if it would have.
If they're not in between A and B, then it doesn't matter what you do right now.
To this particular customer or petitioning for you, you're correct.
We have to find out where he is and take it from there at that point. Okay.
But looking at what they're doing here, it looks like that incorporates that particular developer's property there.
Correct. It is, it is crossing over, so.
Can they come out and connect into a manhole cover there and bring it into the building? Is it, that simple or is it that difficult?
Well, the underground network is owned by other utilities. So, there's a petition process that Light Tower has to go through to get the approval to use, provided there's vacant space. So, you know, not to say that they won't. It's a matter of identifying the location, the customer, what's the easiest way to be able to get there. Is it an underground application or is it aerial?
Maybe to clarify this, is he just one person that had a problem with this?
It's a substantial business owner, Mr. Chairman.
So, why can't we do this? Why don't we give this gentleman the name and address of the man?
Correct.
And tonight, we can, we can pass this on and with a letter assuring that, that the abudda is satisfied.
Before the permit is, before the permit is issued.
For the permit is issued, exactly.
And then we could have a letter from this company to the city clerk, assure them that
everybody's satisfied with it and just grant them the right to do it. So, we're not holding them up for three months.
As long as that's the case, Mr. Chairman, I don't have a problem.
Okay, so Counselor Sani.
And also, can we get a signature from the owners that met with them? So, this way we have it in writing from the owners also. Maybe they can have a some type of form or a letter when they go out to them, that they went out and met with the owners.
So, what we, well, before we get, okay, so the motion's withdrawn. Okay, now before us, we're going to have a motion for favorable action with.
Contingent.
With contingent upon a letter from the, Joe, maybe you could give the information that he needs.
Yep, we can relay it to the city clerk, contingent upon this company meeting with.
The developer.
The developer down there where the, crossing his property to make sure that if there's any way that, you know, contingent upon a permit being issued, that he contacts the owner of 742 Broadway.
And within one week so that this doesn't get delayed and the.
Sure.
The developer, you know, doesn't hold them up for three months, so.
Correct.
Which is fine. So, it'd be a week delay or whatever it takes just to be in touch with the developer. The information, I don't know if you can supply it, Counselor.
I can, I can send it. We can give it to the city clerk later on this evening.
Okay, then you give the information to the city clerk during the week.
Okay.
In one week, that should be a big enough window. He should get this thing organized, okay? So, you're not delayed with your construction. So, we have a motion.
I second that motion.
Motion made, second for favorable action, continue upon the restrictions that we had just said. The clerk will have the information that you'll need.
Excuse with the customary thanks.
Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Clerk, read item number three.
Item number three is, twelve persons interested in public hearing for an auto repair mechanical and body shop for Suhal Al-Ahmi, DBA, U.S. Auto Truck Repair, 99 Bow Street, Everett.
Mr. Chairman, is everything in order?
Yes.
Well, we still have to have the public hearing on this. Okay, so we'll make a motion to invite the petitioner if he's here. Motion made, second to invite the petitioner. All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, gentlemen, how are you? Circuit, state your name, please.
My name is Sohail Al-Ahmi. Sohail Al-Ahmi, and I'd like to open a body shop and a repair shop where L&amp;J used to be, 99 Bow Street.
Okay, gentlemen, with you.
I'm Anthony Champa, very good friends of.
Okay. Speak your mind, Mr. Chairman.
And I live on 181 Bow Street, Neverland.
Okay, and what is, was this been before the license in committee before? No?
No, it hasn't, no. This is a new license.
It's a brand new license.
Yes.
That's the public hearing, that's why we have the public hearing.
And we will get issued, and we will issue this tonight if everything's in order and if there's no up. So, at this time, obviously, we stated what they're here for. At this time, why don't we excuse with the customary thanks and we'll start the motion made to start the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? At this time, I mentioned three times, anybody who's in favor of this petition, anybody who's in favor of this petition, anybody's in favor of this petition, seeing none, that part of the public hearing is over. Is anybody opposed to this petition? Anybody opposed to this petition? Anybody opposed to this petition? Seeing none, that's over, the public hearing's over. The matter's before you. We have any questions regarding papers in order?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I did ask the question if the papers were in order, but we do have rules on when they can open, when they can close. Has that all been given to the petitioner?
Yes, the previous, they'll have the same, the previous company that was in there, their, their license has expired. They did, they have since moved on. Proposed hours of operation are eight to five, Monday through Saturday.
Okay, thank you. Favorable action on the order.
Second. Motion made and favored, roll call vote.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Del Sola.
Yes.
Counselor De Florio.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor McGonigal.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor Palatano.
Yes.
Counselor Sichetta.
Yes.
Counselor Sani.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor MacAsie.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Thank you. Could excuse with the customary.
License has been granted. Congratulations. Good luck down there.
Thank you very much.
Okay, at this time.
Mr. Chairman, could we please suspend rule 7.2 and take the 10-minute participation out of order where we have some appointees here tonight? So, I would like to suspend the rule and take items six, 7.2, and take items six and 11.
Second.
We'll do one at a time, but it's six and 11 that need to be appointee, so.
Okay, motion made to suspend the rules and take item six.
Yes.
All favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Clerk, read item number six.
Item number six, subject, it is an order sponsored by Counselor MacAsie, his president, subject confirmation by the honorable local city council. I hereby appoint Nicholas Cristiano, Joseph Foria, James McGregor, Lauren Baglucia, Stephen Sabella, Colson Embrano, Lena Zizpetroman in the City of Everett Police Department. Favorable action on the order.
Motion made, second for favorable action. All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call, excuse me.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Del Sola.
Yes.
Counselor De Florio.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor McGonigal.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor Palatano.
Yes.
Counselor Sichetta.
Yes.
Counselor Sani.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor MacAsie.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Congratulations, you have just been appointed, just need to swear again.
You have to swear.
Now, please go forward, all the future policemen.
Are you ready to write in? See that for me? I do solemnly swear that I am faithfully and impartial in this charge to perform all the duties incumbent upon me as a patrolman for the Everett Police Department, putting the best of my abilities and understanding and bravely to the rules, regulations, laws, ordinance of charter of the City of Everett and to help you guide. I do solemnly swear that I bear true faith and allegiance and will uphold the Massachusetts and will support the Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth and to help you guide. I do solemnly swear that I bear true faith and allegiance in the United States of America and to support the Constitution of the United States and to help you guide.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion.
Motion made for five-minute recess, Mr. Chairman.
I second that motion.
Motion made for about five-minute recess so that the family can come out and take some pictures up here. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Five-minute recess.
Congratulations, gentlemen. Good luck, great, safe.
If you'd like to take pictures, family come up here right now.
Thank you.
Which one is yours?
Uh, here is it, right there.
Good-looking one.
In the middle.
Next to the mayor?
Uh, no, not next to the mayor, the, the one, right next to my husband. One at the back, on the right or the left?
Yeah, right there.
I can't get Nick, I can't see Nick that way.
That's why I hear him. Nick, it's all about you.
Thank you, one more, everybody go.
Oh, sure, show off, he can fit in between there, nice.
Yes.
Yeah.
What's up, gentlemen?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to call this meeting back to order, please.
Item number eleven.
Motion made to take, uh, suspend the rules, take item number eleven, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Clerk Reed, item eleven.
Item number eleven, is subject confirmation by the honorable city council, hereby appoint Chief Leonard H. Jordan and eleven other listed members of the Everett Auxiliary Department Special Police Officer of the City of Everett, these appointments shall be made for an unpaid term of one year ending July fourteenth, twenty fifteen.
Favorable action on the order?
Second, motion made, second for favorable action, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Well, excuse me, roll call vote on this.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delasola.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor McGonigal.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor Palatano.
Yes.
Counselor Sichata.
Yes.
Counselor Sonny.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
Counselor Markage.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Uh, you've been confirmed, uh.
Yep.
Now, clerk.
Can we have the patrolman first? Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent on me. As a special police officer. For the City of Everett. According to best my abilities and understanding. Agreeably to rules. Regulations. Laws. Ordinance as a charter. Of the City of Everett. So help me God. I do solemnly swear. That I bear true faith and allegiance. To the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And will support the Constitution and laws. Of the Commonwealth. So help me God. I do solemnly swear. That I bear true faith and allegiance. To the United States of America. And I will support the Constitution of the United States. So help me God. I'll give all this to the man, thank you everybody. Uh, the lieutenants, please. Just once, I have to say Constantino's Mascot. At least once. I know. Raise your right hand, I do solemnly swear. That I am faithfully and impartially. Discharge and perform. All the duties incumbent on me. As lieutenant of the Everett Auxiliary Police Department. According to best my abilities and understanding. Agreeably to the rules. Regulations. Laws. Ordinance as a charter. Of the City of Everett. So help me God. I do solemnly swear. That I bear true faith and allegiance. To the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And will support the Constitution and laws. Of the Commonwealth. So help me God. I do solemnly swear. That I bear true faith and allegiance. To the United States of America. Support the Constitution of the United States. So help me God. Thank you, gentlemen. Raise your right hand, see that for me, I Leonard H. Jordan. Do solemnly swear. That I am faithfully and impartially. Discharge and perform. All the duties incumbent upon me. As chief of the Everett Auxiliary Police Department. According to the best my abilities and understanding. Agreeably to the rules. Regulations. Laws. Ordinance as a charter. Of the City of Everett. So help me God. I do solemnly swear. That I bear true faith and allegiance. To the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Will support the Constitution. And laws of the Commonwealth. So help me God. I do solemnly swear. That I bear true faith and allegiance. To the United States of America. And support the Constitution of the United States. So help me God.
Make a motion, take a five-minute recess. Aye. We just made a motion, take a five-minute recess.
While you're on your rodeo book.
While you're on your rodeo book.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, um, make a motion to, uh, open the public hearing. Ten-minute public participation.
Second.
Oh, we don't have a clerk here.
We don't have a clerk. We need to find a clerk.
Yeah, I will.
No clerk, it's all right, yeah. Busy.
Chairman, a motion to go find the clerk?
Well, police want to be a clerk.
Be a temporary clerk.
Can we take it to clerk, the temporary clerk? John Burrow?
I think he's getting those papers signed. I have a motion to open public participation.
Second.
Most she made second to open, uh, public, uh, participation. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. At this time, anybody to stand and anybody out in the seating would like to, uh, discuss any piece of?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have a-
Do you have a sign? I'm sorry.
I don't know if the clerk had to read the item before we can move on. Item number four.
Resilience by Counselor MacAfee, his president, called ten-minute public participation.
Uh, I have a signing sheet. Mary Busher?
Mary Busher? Speak right there in the, uh- Mary, obviously state your name and then-
Hi, Mary Busher, uh, Floyd Street. I was here, um, two weeks ago when I was talking against the stretch code and, um, I wanted to, upon the recommendation of the Secretary, Carolyn, um, be invited to the earlier meeting to speak. But I called a couple of the counselors and never got calls back. I wanted to ask to be invited to speak. So I don't know what the batting average is, how to get, um-
Just come up to it.
To call me back, you know?
Or just come up to the meeting in the future and you can speak.
Okay.
They'll acknowledge you.
But don't wait for people to return my call. Um, I had an impromptu meeting that, with, um, Mr. Sober and Mr. Berry, so that probably worked out better. That was just the three of us talking. I still have reservations about the stretch code, that it's gonna cost more and, um, make, you know, if you wanna use your attic, you have to bring the rafters down to, um, twelve inches. Be hard to walk around an attic with the rafters twelve inches, but, you know, it has its pros and cons and it sounds like you're over a barrel to vote for it. So, okay, but if you wanna be a green city, you gotta plant trees, more trees. You gotta stop people from idling their cars for hours every day outside of the schools as they, um, wait for their kids. And you don't want a science lesson from me. You should know how good trees are for the environment, how bad idling cars is. There should be something to stop that idling and plant trees. Um, I, um, which brings me to, you know, the dead tree park, Seven Acre Dead Tree Park. Nothing's been done about the trees there. They're, um, said last year that they would replace them. I, um, gave up trying to walk there because there's always one to twenty unleashed dogs. I just can't go there. So I've been walking on the side street and this weekend I found hypodermic needles just on the road by the, um, little hockey tennis court there. I go on picking up litter often, but that's not the kind of litter I pick up. Um, I don't know what to do. I feel unsafe. It's scary. I see other things around the neighborhood like that, unused items that don't, um, people do their thing and throw them in the street. So what do you, what do you do about, you know, situations like needles? The dogs in the park are running around this park that's been capped and deemed unfit for humans to play in. No one's supposed to be on the grass. Kids can't go there. It's passive-use park. But all the time, there's dogs running around, rolling in it, digging. How is the, um, health of the dogs not valued when it's different for the children? Um, it's, it's the same, you know? It's, uh, not okay for people. Why is it okay for dogs? Um, so concerned about that. I mean, I don't want, um, people's dogs being sick. I don't want them jumping on me, but I don't want them sick. All along the bike path, there's big patches of poison ivy. I warn people all the time because they let their dogs run in the sides. And, um, a lot of people never even heard of poison ivy. So it'd be good if there was identifying, um, little signs saying, "Watch out for poison ivy," so people might know what to look for. Um, you know, just public safety, um, and health issues. I just wanted to address. So, um, thanks for-
Thank you for your participation.
-your time and have a great summer off and see you in the fall.
We'll see if we can address a few of them. Some of them are reasonable, some of them a little too much, but we'll see what we can address.
What seems like too much?
Well, we don't know about the, um, you know, whether the land is polluted enough to get, to get dogs sick. I don't know about that part of it. We'll have to ask about that.
Uh-huh. Yeah, I can't get a straight answer from anyone. That's why I'm bringing it up here. I figure-
But we'll, we'll ask.
If I cast my net wide, I might, something might be done.
And I always thought there was a designated area for the dogs, so I'll look into that.
It's conflicting. If it's not safe for humans, why is it safe for dogs?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
I don't have anybody else on the signing sheet, Mr. Chairman, so I make a, uh, motion to close public participation.
Most she made second to close public participation. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose.
Mr. Chairman, if we could please suspend the rule and take items number 21. We have some people here waiting for a long time and I give my sincere apologies.
Second.
Motion made second to suspend, uh, the rules and take item 21. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Clerk read item 21. What, it's the, um, right here.
Item number 21, resolution sponsored by Counselor John Liam McKinnon to invite Sean Coyle on our Ferry Street Inc. app to explain his idea for 5K race with the City of Everett to benefit Autism Awareness for 2015.
Can we invite, uh, Mr. Sean Coyle up, please?
Motion made, uh, in second to invite Mr. Coyle, um, up front. Hi, Sean, how are you?
Hi, how you doing? This is my son Shane, everyone.
Hey Shane.
And my girlfriend Teresa.
Sean, just, uh, if you could briefly explain what you'd like to do.
Uh, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, my name is Sean Coyle. I live at 80 Foster Street here in Everett. Many of us are here for, uh, for the hope of an answer, um, of yes for our proposed race, our proposed 5K run-walk event. We are willing and hoping to work with the mayor, the police chief, city services, and of course, our great community, the citizens of Everett, uh, to make this a great event. Uh, for our local autistic families and children here in Everett. So we're hoping for a yes to move forward. Uh, we're proposing this for next year, April 25th, 2015. And, uh, we would like to move forward with this great event that we want the whole city included in.
Uh, Mr. Coyle?
Um, Counselor McKinnon?
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Coyle, um, what have you done so far? Have you, you've already went out to the community, you've already, um, started a 501(c)(3).
Yes.
You've already done all, all the necessary things that you have to do.
Yes, we, we have organized a nonprofit organization. We did file our 501(c)(3). We did have a petition to all the local businesses, um, for our race route. A good majority of all the businesses have signed and, and they support us. Uh, we do have documentation on that.
Um, also, uh, you've been in conversations with, uh, our chief as well. And I, I know I have, um, I've also been in, in talking to the mayor's office as well. I know that you've been talking to him as well, so-
Yes.
I'm gonna have them come up after and just, you know, briefly touch on a couple of things so that we can move forward on this.
Okay.
Uh, is, is, it's sort of time-sensitive, so you need to get going or?
It is, uh, we realize that, you know, the, the board goes into recession for a couple of months, uh, I believe in September. We would really like to start as soon as possible. There's a lot to organize this. And, uh, we would, we're here today with the hope of a yes vote to move forward with this event.
Um, and you're, you're willing to work with the, uh, the chief and the mayor's office and city services with this?
Of, of course. I'm willing to work with everyone on this matter.
Right.
This event.
I'd like to, um, see if we can have the-
Counselor Capone?
I'm sorry.
Still for discussion. Now, Counselor Capone?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What, what time of year you look, ideally would be the best time to do the race?
We're looking to do it in April, which April is Autism Awareness Month, and we're hoping to spread awareness to, to the community. That April is Autism Awareness. Uh, currently, we have, uh, eighty-nine families here in Everett that have autistic children. Um, next year, we will have more. It's one in sixty-eight children now are being born with autism.
I think it's a great cause. Uh, my wife, uh, through college, worked with autistic children. I got the benefit of being a volunteer, hanging around and helping out, so I think it's a wonderful cause.
Thank you.
Two-second plug, if we can. Since you have a, a charitable organization set up, if people who are watching at home wanna help donate or assist, is there someone they should contact?
Uh, we, we do have it set at Santander Bank. Um, Sandy has helped me, the lady down there, Sandy at the bank, has helped me get the paperwork all set, along with my girlfriend Teresa. Um, we can get that number out to people, you know?
Okay.
For, for the bank. Yes.
Okay.
Yes. We plan on really doing some grassroots campaigning and letting the whole city be aware from the, you know, the Chamber of Counsel to, um, Commerce, to everyone. We would like to be included and support us and help us.
Good for you. It's a great cause and I'm glad you're on it.
Thank you.
Uh, Counselor Floyd? I'm just gonna be, uh, Counselor Floyd?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Coyle, just to have you know that, uh, just because, uh, the board is not here for two months, we're still around. So if you ever need anything, you can personally call us.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Just because we're not physically here, it doesn't mean that we're gonna be out of the city. And we're all listed on the website, so if you need anything from us, I'm sure we'll all be around.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I appreciate that.
Through every, uh, Counselor Hanlon? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do you have a, a website or something?
We plan on opening a website.
Right now, we have a microsite on his Ferry Street Inc. site.
You weren't speaking for a while.
Oh, I'm sorry. So at present, until we get the approval from this committee, um, we have a microsite set up on his Ferry Street Inc. business website. But once we get the go-ahead and we can start making these plans and we'll set up a separate and distinct website. We didn't wanna pay for the hosting and everything until we got the approval.
Well, I, I would ask you then if you would keep our office informed?
Oh, most definitely.
Just a, a letter or a note? We'd like to know what your coming up, coming events would be and when you're gonna have them and so forth, and especially if you get that website so we can follow you on that, okay?
Definitely. Thank you.
We can excuse them with the, that's very thanks. I'd like to invite up the mayor, the chief.
Sure.
Second.
Thank you for attending tonight.
Thank you all. I appreciate-
Appreciation and, uh, hopefully, uh, Everett will be, uh, Autism Awareness Month, too. Hopefully, we can start that. It'll be great for the city.
I think it would be wonderful for the city.
Sean did a great job.
Thank you.
Shall we please have the, uh, mayor, the chief of police and city services up first?
Chief, uh, up. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
City services?
Uh, also, ci- city services.
Uh, Jay?
Yeah. Mr. Mauchott, too, please.
Counselor McKinnon?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to, uh, Honorable Mayor. Uh, Mr. Mayor, um, we've, uh, run this through your office. I've touched bases, uh, with your chief of staff. Also, I, I've touched bases with the chief as well as Mr. Mauchott on this. I think that it's a, a good cause that we're gonna be doing this for, and I think it's a community-based thing, so we could actually have some fun with it as well.
Yeah, yes.
I think it's a great cause and I think that, uh, you know, we should support this.
I think we all agree. Um, no one disagrees. I think it's a great cause and I think it's a great idea of, of doing, uh, something recognizing, uh, Autism Awareness Month, uh, that it's a great idea and we'll, we'll get on that right away and, uh, we're looking at September this year, is that?
Uh, April.
April of next year, April of next year. I'm sure we'll, uh, we almost, Mr. Coyle, and, uh, he's very, uh, he's a great, great resident of the City of Everett and we'll definitely work with him in getting a good route and even promoting on our city website, whatever we can do to, uh, uh, make sure all our kids who have autism are, um, you know, are recognized and they have a great day.
Um, I think we're gonna work with, uh, Officer, um, Officer Hall, who loves these kind of events. Uh, we're gonna, I'm gonna designate Officer Hall as the police officer that will deal with, uh, uh, the run. He does a lot of these different causes. We usually start them out of the rec center and, uh, we have a great course planned out. We'll work with, uh, Mr. Coyle and his group in making sure this is a successful event. Uh, so, uh, I know, uh, I think Mr. Coyle's been dealing with Melissa Murphy, my chief of staff, and the chief of the, in, in the Director of Public Works, but, uh, we have no problem with this issue, with this, with this great cause and, uh, we'll definitely be able to squeeze it in the calendar and make it a calendar event for- We're planning on having a calendar event for all, all residents to, to come out and support. We'll make sure this is one of those recognized by the city also, so.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Mr. Mauchott, would you like to add anything in? I, I know that you've handled a couple of other races before, so, I mean-
I, I fully agree and support, um, this entire cause and I agree with the mayor on, as to, uh, how the city's gonna recognize and be prepared to, uh, make sure that this is an outstanding event.
Thank you. And chief, if you wanna add?
No, just, uh, again, as the mayor said, uh, Mr. Mauchott, I'm-
No, just, uh, again, as the mayor said, uh, Mr. Mark Carton, I might fully support it. Uh, it's an issue that's close to me as well. I have, uh, family members that are affected by this, and, uh, I've coached kids that are affected by autism, so, um, the only thing, we, we just talked about modifying the course to make sure it's, um, something that we can have least disruption to the community, but I, I don't see a problem at all with, um, getting it done.
So, you'll work with Mr. Coyle on this?
Absolutely, yep.
Okay, great. Um, no further questions?
Uh, Council Del Sol.
Uh, Chief from there, is there something we could do for, uh, volunteers, for details, uh, 'cause, you know, it's gonna be a big event in between, um, deterrun streets and blocking the roads and, uh, city workers being out there and clean up afterwards and all this? Just trying to keep the cost down for?
I, I personally spoke to him about that. We'll do everything we can within our power to keep costs to a, to a minimum, um, to make sure, obviously, funding's going towards the cause itself. Absolutely.
It is the same route as we use all the time, isn't it?
Well, he has a, he had a route that was a little, that deviated normally, but we, we'd like to use the route we normally use because it is, uh, the least impacting on our community traffic-wise, um, community-wise, and resource-wise for us as well.
They'd be a great cause, and I'll, I'll be the first one to sign up if I have to. That'd be great to run. Thank you.
Yep.
Do I have any more questions out there? Uh, seeing done, uh, thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Thank, thank you.
You're welcome.
As before you.
Uh, favorable action on this now? Motion.
Mr. Page, accept the petition, report, and place on file. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Uh, very good. Now, hopefully, like you said, we can have our opposed the Autism Awareness Month. That'll be great.
Mr. Uh, I'm sorry.
Do you have anything on?
Yes, I have a sign-in sheet. That's the suspend rule twenty and take items number eighteen.
Motion made to suspend rule twenty and take item number eighteen. All in favor? Oppose? Clerk read item eighteen.
Thank you.
Item number eighteen is an order sponsored by Council Mike Mike Hayes. His presence to the great general court removed the position of fire chief of, uh, civil service large in Black Rangers and fire chief exam over the past few years, and to prepare for when the position of fire chief eventually opens, as would not affect the current fire system status.
Number, number eighteen.
I thought we were on item twenty.
No, eighteen. We just said twenty-one. Number eighteen, before you. On the other. Uh, um, Council Seminelli.
I would like to, uh, to bring up the representative, uh, I mean, the representative of the fire chief and also, uh, the union, uh, the union rep, please.
All right. Uh, motion made to invite the union rep and the fire chief before us. All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Mr. Harding, Mr. Chief Butler, and Mr. Harding, please. Matters before you. Uh, Council Seminelli.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Um, Mr. President. Just like to get, uh, you guys both your inputs on how you feel about this, uh, petition or this referendum.
Great, President.
Um, the union, Local One Forty-three, is against this for the pure facts that, I mean, we have a civil service chief that's active now, and Chief Butler, he's a good chief. He came up through the ranks. All of our members are aspiring to be a chief. There's a lot of members, I should say, that are aspiring to be a chief, and this would handicap them, so to speak. The system we have in place now is fine. I don't believe it's broken. I don't see the problem with it, and I'm not curious. I know those different, the city has different sentiments coming through the personnel director. I'm not gonna go into detail on that, but we're just against it, and we feel it should stay in civil service. That's how the union feels.
This is probably gonna be a historic moment here because myself and the union president agree on this matter. You know, I've, I've, for a long time, I've been voicing my concerns that we have to do some succession planning in the fire department, uh, for the chief's position, and I believe some work has to be done on that. Uh, I, I firmly believe that the position should remain with somebody in the department, and, but I, I think some work has to be done on succession planning, but I don't think at this time, the answer is to take that position out of civil service, in light of the fact that we don't have any type of a plan in place to fill the job, so. I, I believe it should stay in civil service at this time.
Can we invite?
Uh, Council McKinnon. I'm sorry, you done, Council?
I'm sorry.
You done, Council?
I just wanted to say one thing. I think, I believe, this is just my, uh, my, my opinion, but the people's opinion is that it shouldn't be long in the, and that the guys in the ranks come up, and it shouldn't be controlled by, uh, any, uh, by the mayor to control the job when he can't really do his job well. I think by doing this way, if this is the way it works, and it's, and I'm, I'm definitely, uh, against this. Thank you.
Uh, Council McKinnon.
Through you, Mr. President, to the, uh, chief. Are you planning on going anywhere soon, chief?
I don't have any plans to.
Okay, we're just making sure on that. Can we invite, uh, the personnel director up, please?
Uh, motion made, second to invite Mr. Deion to the, uh, Kirby couch. All in favor?
Aye.
Close?
Mr. Deion, what's your position on this?
Um, I think that, um, I, I think that the city's taking the right approach with taking it out of civil service. I think we've done it with the, with the police chief position. It's worked out. We had our current chief work his way up through the ranks as well, um, and we got a good chief out of it. Um, I think that, um, it, taking it out gives, it gives the, um, more, it gives us more of a, a broad scope to be able to look at, um, you know, different candidates versus, you know, some are taking an exam.
Uh, Council Sonny.
Thank you. So, this doesn't affect the chief now that we have in place?
Correct.
So, it's just for the future, and do we see people taking tests right now in preparing and?
No, no one's taken a test. I think last time I mentioned it's like four years since someone's taken the test.
And now, um, moving forward, if we did support this, um, how, do we have something in place that would, would, who would be in place to take that position if we didn't have a civil service?
The, uh, the appointing authority, who's the mayor, would, would temporarily appoint, um, somebody into that position from civil service.
Thank you.
Uh, Council DeFlorio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, for the union rep, uh, wait, do you, do you see a problem with people taking the civil service test? Is this something that's been, you know, years ago, everybody took a civil service test. Now, is it kinda drilling them down?
I mean, it's definitely not a problem. I mean, we just had captains made. We've had lieutenants made. The situation that my membership fell into is, Chief Butler's been the chief for a good amount of time. Our members are aware of this, and the reason why our members haven't taken the exam in the last four years is for the fact that they believe that they were gonna die in a list and just spend the money, and it's an expensive exam. It costs them a good chunk of change, and not that they were wasting their time, but they just figured that if Chief Butler is still gonna stay here, if they take that exam, it dies in two years, there's no need to take it at this point in time. And then, as they, as the personnel director stated about them and the chief, that they don't have a plan right now if he leaves, there is a plan through civil service. If Chief Butler retired tomorrow and wanted to enjoy the good life, what they would, the mayor would do the same exact thing. He would appoint someone, one of our deputy chiefs, as temporary chief. They call for a special exam in civil service. They take the special exam, chief gets mad. So, there's a plan in place. It's just right now, no one is taking the exam for the fact that Chief Butler, they believe, he's, you know, the chief, which he is. He's a good chief.
So, you can temporarily appoint someone, then they can take the civil service?
They call for a special exam.
What is the, what happens if they feel it?
Then it would be opened up to the next rank. Right now, it would go to deputy chiefs, and the reason why it opens up is no one takes it in that year. It goes to the following rank.
Okay, could, um, can we have the mayor come up, please?
Motion made to have, uh, the mayor before us. All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Welcome, ma'am.
Thank you.
Question for the mayor.
So, maybe, may I can just make a comment? Did you want to ask me a question?
The question is that, uh, for years, it's always been done through civil service. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. So, how, how would this benefit, how would this benefit the city by not having a civil service?
Well, the best test taker will get the job. Um, if you were able to appoint the best replacement for a chief, glad, thankfully, we got a great chief. You know, we had a great chief, had Chief Butler. He's fiscally conservative. He runs a good operation. He treats his employees well. Um, I think at the end of the day, if the mayor were to appoint the next chief, it's approved by this council, so we have the, we have the, um, the authority to appoint the next chief rather than a, a test telling us, this person scored the highest grade, he should have, he or she should have the, have the position. Um, it brings it back into our hands, and we can choose the person we think more, more suitable to run the department. Um, and sometimes, you know, it's, it's not the person who's the best friend of all the members down there, but it's the person who's gonna effectively manage the operation, save us money on overtime and sick leave, and make sure the facilities are in, in good condition, um, and, and works with the administration, um, you know, hand it. I'm fortunate to have, Dave Butler was the chief. He, we have a great working relationship, um, but, uh, who knows what, if that would not be, not be the case. Uh, it could not be the case. Uh, the next, if, if the chief was able to take a test and become the chief, and maybe I wouldn't have that good working relationship. Um, I, I am the mayor of the city of Everett. This is a department under the city of Everett, and I like the ability to appoint who I think should run the department and have your, 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 your approval, and if one of you were to be mayor next, next time, or years from now, I think you would also want that o- opportunity to do that. It's a, it's a real important department in the city, probably one of the most important departments in the city.
But, first, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, if a person?
And, and if I'm elected by the people of the city to run their city, I think they would want the mayor to also, uh, appoint their chief, their fire chief.
In regards to, uh, the civil service test, if the next person came up and we decided that, because this board obviously also has to approve of them being the chief, is that correct? Uh, no, just the mayor?
What, civil service?
You appoint and we approve.
Correct.
Okay.
Not now, not, that's not how it is now.
That's not how it is now.
The chief position? No. Civil service.
So, civil service, we wouldn't have a say?
Whoever takes a test and scores the highest grade.
That's what I was getting to.
Gets the job.
So, we, we don't have a say. We don't appoint. It's the next person.
No, correct.
So, if the next person is, is, might be capable of taking the test, is what you're saying, but maybe not capable of?
I believe the test is open to, what, what ranks?
No, it goes back to deputy chief.
Uh, only deputy chiefs can take it. Only, only deputy chiefs can take the, uh, I don't think so.
I'm really not sure.
Yeah, I don't.
Last exam was opened up to firefighters.
Right. It could be opened up to, right, and the highest, the highest score would, would get that position.
Well, I would hope that if, when Chief Butler retires, where his department has been under him for a long time, and he's done a great job, that he would recommend someone to us.
Uh, Council Sichella.
I, I don't understand that.
Yes, um, as I understand it, the reason we're going this route, uh, mainly is because no one's been taking the exam for a number of years.
That could be, that, that could be, I mean, that's not really the, the main reason. The main reason, uh, Council Sichella, is that the mayor would be able to choose the best, most responsible person to run the department.
That isn't what the rea- the?
That's the reason.
All right. That's a new reason because?
That's always been my reason.
Well, the way I read it was because no one's taken the exam for a number of years. The fact of the matter is, no one's taken the exam because the chief is here, and he's gonna be here for a few years, so why spend two hundred and fifty dollars for an exam when you're not gonna become chief for another four, five years and take the exam again? Is that correct? Yeah, I'm, I'm definitely in favor of keeping it a civil service. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, Council Del Sol.
I'm just curious, how was the police, uh?
Non-civil service, appointed by, appointed by the mayor, approved by this, by this, um, honorable board.
Aye, thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, Council Capone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I understand the, uh, the reason behind it. Chief, this is a question for you. I know you have no plans of going anywhere yet, but where are you with your tenure and time? Uh, if you chose to leave with full benefits, full pension, when would the earliest date of that be available? Not that you would take it, but?
Four years ago.
Four years ago. Okay, so, you're as ripe as ripe gets. Okay, you've been doing a great job. That's the only question I have. Thank you.
Uh, Council McKinnon.
Through you, Mr. President, to, uh, the union representative, Greg. Um, who's eligible to take the test?
What, as the chief just stated, the last test that no one did sign up for was open to every rank in our department, so any member was eligible to take that exam for the fact that it hasn't been taken in the last few years.
So, it could be a firefighter that comes up, scores a high rank, high rank on the civil service test and becomes a chief?
Well, I disagree. I don't believe it goes by the highest score. I believe the city can pick the top three candidate, and I do believe this board right here has to final, okay, because I, the last process I've seen with my captains, lieutenants getting made, there was a vote held here between the honorable board, so I figured that was the final say.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilman McGonagall.
And, and thank you, Craig, and through the mayor to the, uh, chief. That's what I'm told, okay, what Mr. Harding just said. I wanted to wait to hear everybody. I'm told that if you take the civil service exam, whether you're a private, a captain, or whoever, it's the three top candidates.
Okay.
That, that get selected, so.
So, it could be three privates?
It, it, it could be.
Absolutely could be.
It, it could be.
Most definitely could be, 'cause they're a lot younger, and they're, uh, a lot more, uh, coming out of school just recently, and, uh, have more opportunity to study.
I, um, I'll say this, Mr. Mayor, that, you know, senior deputies in rank, I believe, um, should succeed the chief, period. So, um, I, I think that if the chief decided to retire, after speaking through a few firemen, um, in the city, I didn't get a chance to speak to the chief or to Mr. Harding, but some of the gentlemen I spoke to retired and presently there, um, I, I believe that they would step forward and take this exam. And if two privates and a deputy chief score the highest out of that, you would see a deputy chief, and not that I'm an expert in the fire department, I'm not trying to say I am, but just alone, their experience in leadership, their education, I mean, to become a deputy chief, um, is quite an ordeal, and, and, and all of them that I know, they're continuing their education, so it just doesn't have to be, according to the civil service exam, that you would have to take the highest score. It, it, from what I was told, it, it is the top three. And the mayor is right. It could be three privates, um, but I, I don't believe that's the case, 'cause I think, once Chief Butler said to the mayor, listen, I plan on retiring in January two thousand and eighteen, I think that, that, that would open it up to qualified captains, lieutenants, deputy chiefs, and I think, uh, you know, rank and file is important.
That would be a temporary thing. A deputy chief would be appointed temporarily, then you'd have to have an exam.
Correct.
The top three people, uh, now, I didn't hear that, but the top three people would be the three people that you would be able to choose from, and only those three.
You would, Mr. Mayor. You would.
Exactly. The only three out of the, the entire membership, or, uh, even if somewhere else, I mean, if you wanted to go outside, I mean, you don't have, not something you wanna do, but, um, so you, you, you know, you would, you're limited. Now, I would hope the deputy chiefs would score the highest, the three, I think we have three right now? Or we have five? Five, five. I would hope the three would be three of the five, but who's to say they'd want to be the chief? Not every deputy chief wants to be the chief. That's the, you know, um, but you'd hope them, that, you'd hope that the top three would be deputy chiefs.
And that, and that's what I'm hoping for. Thank, thank you, gentlemen. I have no further questions.
Mr. Chairman, I personally don't know enough about civil service to know what actually happens in this scenario. I understand why you'd want to be able, as the chief executive officer of the city, to appoint your department head. At the same time, I understand how the men and women of the fire department would want to make sure it was someone from the ranks. My recommendation is that we, the chief has stated he's got, not going anywhere anytime soon. I would recommend we lay on the table, give us an opportunity, at least, speaking for my own self, give me an opportunity to understand how the process works, who's eligible to take the exam, and what level of interest there might actually be on the force. That's the motion I would make.
On the motion, Council McKinnon.
Through you, through you, Mr. Chairman, to, uh, Council Capone. Um, it is the top three. It is the top three. So, it'll be the top three high scores that would come out and they would choose from there. And they would pick one of the three. So, it goes one out of the three top scores. So, it could be, that's what we're looking at. But temporarily, what they would do is put in a deputy chief. Hopefully, all our deputy chiefs take a test and they score well.
Yeah. And I, I'd still keep my motion with laying it on the table because I'd like to speak, like to speak to the force myself and see what their thoughts are.
There's a motion on the floor.
On, on the motion, Councilor Hamlin.
Mr. Chairman, I'm looking at the calendar and the calendar says, I just want to read this, "To petition the great general court to remove the position of fire chief in civil service law." At our last meeting, I, um, had read section 10.5, which says the disposition of certain laws. And one of those were that we cannot get rid of chapter 86 of the Acts of 1933 relative to the fire chief, which says that he shall be in city service. At that meeting, I know you heard from both of us, both sides and everything, and they said, "Well, now the state law says that they can do that." And I'm saying that, well, this, the charter is a state law also and the charter says that it has to be retained. They said, "No, it doesn't." So, I thought that someone would do a little bit more research and, of course, I, I did also. And I don't know if anyone else did, but now I have to read something else to you. And this is the continuation of existing laws. This is section 10.1 of our own charter. It says, "All general laws, special laws, city ordinances, rules and regulations pertaining to Everett, including special acts creating regional entities and arrangements of which the city is a member, that are in force when this charter takes effect and not specifically are by implication repealed by this charter, shall continue in full force and effect until amended or appealed or rescinded by law or until they expire of their own limitation." Now, I think we sort of got to that at the last time. And then it goes on to say, "In any case in which the provisions of this charter are found to be inconsistent with the provisions of any general or special law that would otherwise be applicable, the provisions of this charter shall be deemed to prevail. Every inconsistency between the prior law and this charter shall be decided in favor of this charter." So, what I'm saying, you cannot remove this from this charter based on state law because this is state law. So, this shouldn't even be before us. You want to change it, you have to change the charter.
Councilor Sani.
I think we need to have a city solicitor look into this and get back to us. So, I think we should lay this over and have some research on this.
Well, the motion we have before us to lay it on the table for further information. Uh, didn't have the city solicitor, uh, from the city solicitor's office. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Can we take a roll call on this, please?
The motion is to, uh, lay it on the table for the first meeting in September requesting information from the city solicitor. Councilor Capone?
Yes.
Councilor Del Solo?
Yes.
Councilor DeFlorio?
Yes.
Councilor Hamlin?
No.
Councilor McGonigal?
Yes.
Councilor McKinnon?
Yes.
Councilor Palatano?
Yes.
Councilor Sichella?
No.
Councilor Sani?
Yes.
Councilor Semenelli?
No.
Councilor Mycase?
No.
Seven a's, four n's.
Uh, this has been laid to table for further information from the city solicitor's office. Do we have anything on the calendar? Motion made to spend the rules, take item 15. All in favor? Opposed? Clerk, meet item 15.
Item number 15 is ordinance sponsored by Council Mike Mycase is present to adopt the stretch code regulations in the City of Everett's ordinances in order to become a green community, become eligible for many state grants.
Make a motion to, um, invite Jamie Erickson and Mr. Soprap, please.
Motion made to invite, uh, Mr. Erickson, Mr. Soprap. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Councilor Semenelli.
Yeah. Thank you, through you, to the gentleman here. Discussion goes into effect. It will be mandatory for everybody to comply.
Anyone who's, uh, doing construction work and pulls a permit under the state building code will have to comply with the stretch energy code. As of its inception, which will be, if you pass it after the first of July 2014, will be July 1st, 2015.
Yeah, I, I give no form with the new, new construction, a home or a commercial building. I could see that. But as far as putting extra, you know, burden on the taxpayer and the city, or, you know, trying to just get by with it and, and say, "What happens if it's a small job turns into a big job and they have to comply with the city code and with this?" And the people really can't afford it.
There is, there is no city code that can not exempt a state building code. So, there is no city code zoning ordinances that can edit the building code in its relative to insulation or any part of the building code. So, it's not going to have any city ordinances involved in this.
Well, they're paying enough taxes on the, the, the code enforcement that they have to go by anyway. Now, by adding this, I just think it's just a little bit too much for the, for the taxpayer and the house owner. I think there should be an apt out clause in if you want to have it or not. And also, you, you're talking about, you have to get special windows?
The windows would have to be energy star rated.
And that's another charge.
Yeah. That would be a window that would be approximately $30 more than a window.
A window?
Yes.
That's way out of line. So, I just think that the taxpayers had enough of this and this is good for new buildings. But for the people in Everett, this, this shouldn't be passed on them. They get enough taxes and enough burdens on them. It is, I don't, and I'm, no, I don't think this is good at all.
You want, uh, Council?
It's good for the city, but I don't think it's good for the people. We, the people.
Councilor Sani.
Thank you. On the older homes, um, they, they decided to do their attic over. They talked about they have to come down with rafters, I believe, and is, is, and they make it lower, their heads might hit. Is that something that you look at and say, "No, you don't have to, but you still have to insulate above?"
Well, when someone does an attic over, and I'm, I'm thinking when you're telling me about that, they're going to take an existing attic area that is unconditioned, unheated, and they're going to now heat it, make a bedroom of a playroom or a study out of it. The building code says, whether you pass the stretch code or not, doesn't matter. You're going to have to insulate that attic. Okay? So, stretch code, regular code, doesn't matter. You take an unconditioned space, you condition it, you insulate it. Kind of common sense, really. Want the heat going out the windows.
In with the windows you were talking about, I know if you put new windows in, you're going to look for the better ones to save money in the long run. So, you save money even though it's going to cost you $30 more a window, but in the long run, you're going to save in the, down maybe five years from now?
Exactly. The benefits of saving money, energy, uh, electricity bills, heating bills far outweighs and pays off in a short period of time the cost that you have to put in to buy that extra window. So, it might be $30 additionally for the window today. It's going to take you three years to pay that window off and be making another $10 a month on that window and your energy bill. Long range planning.
Thank you.
Uh, Council McGonigal.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. When this first came out, my little bit of knowledge about being in the building industry, I was, I was absolutely against it. A council talks about a window. Okay? Most window manufacturers today, and Mr. Soprap will tell me if I'm wrong, already have a UL label coming on them. I think they're trying to protect, um, people from going to a bargain outlet somewhere or somewhere else out of state and buying a window that isn't, you know, double pane or has a less coated. So, it isn't like local window companies don't already have this type of unit in place. A homeowner never puts an addition on their home. That addition is what follows under the new stretch energy code. And we went over that in the community meeting. Doesn't mean the rest of the house, that poor homeowner, you know, has got to tear out the rest of his walls now and meet that criteria. A woman mentioned that and you're talking about beams and rafters that you'd have to increase. Yeah, you probably would, but there's other solutions. There's a blown insulation, everything that they do. And Mr. Soprap would help these people out with that. There, there is an increased cost, but it's not as substantial as I once believed. But the benefits to the community, the grants that you're going to get throughout the city, and, and Mr. Soprap can speak about them roughly. And, uh, Mr. Erickson said at the community, at the committee meeting, that these grants that we get, some of that money can be put aside to be used for certain fees to help out that homeowner. Like the, the hers, I believe, was one part of it, where it's a $600 fee for them to go through your house and, and inspect your, you know, your, your heating systems and everything. Some of that money, this grant money that we would get can be put aside for that. So, um, you know, a few years ago, I was not farthest enough to speak to Mr. Soprap. I think it's a great program and I think it benefits. It, it benefits the community. You know, I don't think it really hurts it. Hurts the average homeowner. I do not believe it does. Thank you.
Uh, Council Del Solo.
A lot of people go through MassSave through different, uh, situations in the house. Blowing the insulation in. If you got a price for MassSave for, let's say, $2,000 and the insulation blown in, now with the stretch code, would, does that change anything on when they come and just blow, let's say, your average insulation into your walls? Now that your city has a stretch code, does that change the price? Is there a different kind of insulation that they blow in because of the stretch code? Because you're saying a lot of, they don't build a lot of houses four, five a year in Everett. I think you'll see more people like myself going to blow the insulation in the walls to save energy. Would that affect it at all?
It, it, there'd be some effect and let me tell you where. In the walls, there would be no effect. That's a closed cavity. Sheet rock or plaster on one side, boarding sheeting on the other. Closed cavity. They can only blow that cavity to its maximum width with an insulation. Now, when you get into your attic, the attic space, the flat envelope to your house, that can be blown to a higher R value. So, if the current code says R38 and that's the same as the stretch code, is an R38, well, there's no change in the difference. If you came in and you blew your attic today with a permit in my department, you'd have to blow that attic to an R38. No change with the stretch code.
What is the permit fee for someone blowing the insulation?
The permit fees in, in the City of Everett are based on the fair market value of the construction work at $15 per thousand. So, an attic job might be $2,000, $3,000, maybe $45 for a permit.
They may want to look into this MassSave because you do save a lot of money.
Absolutely. There's reductions, there's testing. They come out and they test. They tell you what to do and, and where.
I had a house down last year and you save, you save a lot through MassSave. You can go online and get that. People watching tonight, massave.com. It's any home. They come down, they come down and inspect from top to bottom.
Yeah. One of our hopes, and I, I just wanted to chime in quickly with this program. Should we become a green community? We also want to promote through the mayor's office, it's from his direction, that we, we want to make sure that people are aware of the MassSave program, are aware that we're a green community designation and see the true benefit in both programs, really. I mean, MassSave, I just did it recently for, for a home, for my home, and it was fantastic. It was, it was marketably cheaper because they give you, um, money back on, on the program and you pay a fraction of the cost of actually doing the work. It complies by and large with the stretch code and, and it saves hundreds of dollars a month on energy bills for me.
I think on the project, they paid a first, I can be, I think it's the first $1,500 of the total cost of your blown insulation, whatever you're doing. If it's windows or whatever it is, they paid a first $1,500. Thank you.
Uh, Council DeFlorio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I just want to clarify that from my understanding, and I want the viewing audience to understand, that this is going to become law in three, in approximately two or three years. Is that right? So, the only thing we have to lose right now was the $250,000 grant if we don't pass this.
To make it clear, I have a couple of books right behind me. Excuse me.
He brings props.
Yeah. I kind of did this before for the committee, but this is the 2012 Energy Code, which will be adopted statewide July 1st, uh, 2014, Tuesday. This goes into effect. This book no longer is in effect at all. This book is the 2009 code that we currently use today. The state of Massachusetts has only edited in stretch code this book. There's no stretch code for this book. So, this is what's coming into play on the 1st of, of July. Now, I have some, some notations written on here. On the 1st of July, you'll have to insulate your ceiling to an R49, not an R38 anymore. This is coming. So, to your point, Counselor, this code is coming, whether you want it or not. You're going to, you're going to get it. The difference is, is are we going to get the money we need to, uh, have energy conservation measures in our community? So, that's the difference.
So, basically, that's, that, the bottom line is that that code is coming anyways.
Coming.
So, the point is, if we don't adopt it, the only thing we have to lose is $250,000 in grant.
Correct. So, as part of the program, we will receive, just by being designated a green community and, and in the, the previous meeting, we had shown that there's actually five criteria. There's going to be another, um, set of criteria that we will likely bring in front of this council probably in September, uh, most definitely in September. If we get, if we are designated a green community, we are eligible for an upfront $250, approximate $250,000 grant. Then annually, we can compete with other green communities for additional funding, typically in the range of your initial appropriation. So, in the case of Everett, we would likely compete for $250,000 on an annual basis. And by and large, many communities have received pretty much what they've competed for. It's, um, been a successful program in many communities around the state.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, Council McKinnon.
I, I've spoken depth to both these gentlemen on this matter. I've met with them on this. This is coming regardless. And if we don't take, take this now, we, we won't see the benefit from it if we don't take it now. So, if we adopt it after July 1, right, is, is that what it is? Is that what you want to do? You want it July 1 date?
Correct. So, so the hope, given the timeframe, is that we need to have the adoption happen. And we're hoping to have that vote tonight, but with the idea that you would date the acceptance or the, the start of the use of the code after July 1.
Okay. Now, will that run concurrently with that?
That's correct.
Correct.
So, those two will be concurrently running for that first year?
Yes.
And then after that?
You won't have to comply with both. Is that your question?
One, one or the other.
Yeah.
So, you could choose which one you want to comply. Okay. So, you have a choice still?
Yes.
Correct.
So, that would be the opt-out value there. Then, uh, when is the next version coming out from the state? Because I know it's going to be probably two, three years out.
Yeah. We, uh, earlier tonight, Mike Berry with the ICF International spoke and he mentioned that the 2015 code is already written and it's policy the state of Massachusetts to adopt the code every three years on a three-year running basis. So, we're, we're just finishing up with the 2009. I know that's a few years past, that's a year or two past, but we're now into the 2012.
So, we'll, we'll run that concurrently with that and then we'll come from 2014 to...
2012 to 2015.
2012 to 2010.
That's right.
So, we'll run concurrently with them and they'll have a choice still?
Yes.
Okay. And we still benefit? The city benefits the money?
Correct. Yes. Yeah. There's no understanding that that program is going away anytime soon. So, we can certainly, we obviously get that upfront payment and we can, every year, we can apply for...
And that gives us better grant leverage as a green community? Okay.
Correct. Yeah.
I'll be voting for this tonight. I'll be voting for this tonight.
Counselor Capone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I echo the sentiments of almost everybody in the chamber now, especially Counselor McGonigal. My knee-jerk reaction when I first heard about the program, read about the program, I was just concerned about what kind of costs might be hidden in the whole program. I wish that the balance of the body was able to be at the committee meeting that we had this evening. I appreciate the presentation you made. You alleviated my concerns. It's not a certified contractor. It's basically just dealing with the rules that deal exclusively with consumption of energy in trying to save energy. So, you're talking about modest increases in quality of a window, insulation-type of issues, and as has been raised here and mentioned again, it's coming. So, by getting in now, we're gonna provide ourselves with the ability to get some grant funding, get ahead of the curve. There's a lot of great ideas that already been raised this evening about trying to assist those folks who may have a financial difficulty if they're doing some sort of improvement. But I appreciate the presentation you made. My initial reaction was a little nervous, but you've alleviated all my concerns. And the, the bottom line is, the impact to the homeowner, the existing homeowner, is marginal. It's more of an expense, probably come into new construction, things of that nature. But you're dealing with a much bigger animal and a creature than, and everything should be by, you know, dot and eyes crossing teeth anyway. So, thank you very much, and I'll be in favor of this as well.
Counselor Hamlin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, you made my point that I made last week. That's coming, and the stretch code that I pointed out is coming, and no matter what we care, what we want to do, whatever they say on that stretch code, whatever comes in the future, we get stuck with it, no matter what happens, no matter what this says. And I was just thinking that, you know, I have 49 windows in my house, and if I want to fix them, it's gonna cost me about $14,700, and the additional will be about $1,380. Not bad. That's, that's acceptable. What isn't acceptable to me is that we're all the same. Whether we're here, we're on the state, we're on the federal region, we all want to get our two cents in. And so, someone's gonna change this law, and someone's gonna say that if you put an application in me, for instance, to change my windows, and I say, "That's way too expensive", someone's gonna say, "You gotta go with it now, no matter what." And if I have to do that, then I'm gonna have to fix my roof, because that's gonna come along, and I'm gonna have to insulate the cellar, which doesn't need any insulation, because the furnaces are down there. But that's all gonna have to happen. Now, when we say the city's gonna benefit by like $250,000 grant, think of what it's gonna cost all the residents in the city, much, much more than $250,000. We add it all together. That's gonna be a huge burden for everybody to go after. And if I were gonna do my, and I'm gonna say, "Okay, I can come up with $16,000 to do my job. I can do that, you know? But I can't do these other things that they're gonna tell me to do", and I'm gonna say, "Well, I can't do it". And they're gonna say, "It's too late to withdraw. You gotta do it". Now, what do I do? Take out a mortgage? And that's what I'm gonna have to do. And I'm retired, and I can't afford a mortgage. So, who helps me there? The city's gonna come along and say, "Well, John, we'll give you a 2% discount"? Doesn't help. A 10% discount doesn't help. So, I'm not gonna be voting in favor, which we're not supposed to announce, but I'm not going to, because I feel that it's gonna be way, way too expensive for the city. I don't know what this new thing is gonna cost us anyway, and I only know that the, the stretch code is gonna cost the citizens of Everett an awful lot of money in the future. Sorry. Thank you.
Can I address that?
Excuse me?
Can I address that?
Yes, you may.
Okay. Again, what I want to say is, the 2012 Energy Code is coming. It's more stringent than the stretch code we have right now. So, we're gonna put on additional burden on people no matter what. The state has decided. It's what it is. The BBRS promulgates this. They're engineers, they're scientists, they're specialists in their field. They, they decide what the building code is. We can't. We, we outlay people, and we take what they say, and we move with it. And this is how it is with all laws. So, we're stuck with it. We look to benefit from it.
Mr. Chairman?
I, I know, and I understand that, you know, and I understand we're gonna be stuck with this. It's that future sentence that says, "Whatever they want to put in, they can put in. We have nothing to do with it. We can't argue it. You can't argue it, neither can the mayor, neither can the city council. We can't. We have to accept that. That's what bothers me about this whole law. And, and I just, I just can't say, say putting this onto the burden of the citizens of Everett. And me, one of them, you know, and all of us, the rest of us, you know, we're gonna be planning something, we're gonna save $20,000 to do a job, and all of a sudden, it's gonna cost you 55. Maybe that's exaggerated a little bit, maybe 25. And you can say, "I just can't afford that". But then you're gonna have to do it anyway. So, where does that put us? So, that's, that's what my concerns are.
Counselor McKinnon.
Through you, Mr. May, yeah, through you, Mr. May. Through you, Mr. President, to Mr. Sopel. Mr. Sopel, this is coming regardless, correct, from the state?
That's correct. Nothing we can do to stop it.
There's nothing we can do to stop it, but we can benefit from it now if we accept it, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, it, it will put an additional burden on the citizens, correct, when they go to do a window or something like that, correct?
There's a marginal 1% to 3% increase in the cost of work. 1% to 3%.
Now, anything else that's in that home, other than that window, is grandfathered in, correct?
If you're not changing any windows, you don't have to change your windows. If you elect to change your windows, you're gonna have to come up to the 2012 code, which is more stringent than the 2009 code.
Which is automatic.
Which you, which some don't want to adopt.
Okay, which is automatic, correct?
Which is automatic.
And that other one, the brown book that you showed there, is running concurrent with the green book, so that you have a choice, correct?
That's correct.
For one year?
That's correct.
And then we adopt the green book, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, why not accept the benefit and the, you know, grant writing, green grant writing, and everything along with it, if we have to be forced to take this anyway? That's my question, and if anybody can answer that, I'm all set.
Do you have a motion before us here?
Accept, accept the committee report, place on file.
Counselor McGonigal?
Just very brief, only because of the presentation. Mr. Chairman, I...
Thank you. Only because of the presentation that they did bring to us. I mean, it's not just the building part that's gonna benefit the city of Everett. It's not just the $250,000 that they're talking about. Mr. Erickson, explain it to them again so they understand. The green community is more than just the 200, it's, it's a lot of grants that, that help. Once again, please explain that, so it's just not, we're getting caught up on one little aspect of what we're trying to do here.
Certainly. So, thank you, Counselor McGonigal. One of the things that has happened with the Green Communities Act at the statewide level is that nearly every grant that we've applied for at the state level also has a set of criteria asking if the city or municipality is a green community. It typically adds points to our scoring criteria for every grant that we apply for. So, for example, the Sacramento Park grant that we applied for just a few weeks ago, that was for $400,000 to be, for money for Sacramento Park. We just applied one of the criteria, and they scored everybody that applies on the same rating criteria. One of the criteria is, are you a green communities? Because we are not a green community, we did not get those points, and therefore, we are being scored below other similar communities that are also applying for those grants, like Somerville, like Cambridge. A lot of our surrounding communities have green communities, and therefore, they automatically get those points as part of our grant application. So, we can, it will be a net benefit, not just on the $250,000 to the program, but for every state grant that we apply for, park grant, Mass Works grant, even some grants regarding transportation that it's actually a use of federal dollars, but they score it at a statewide level, that we will be rated much more highly because we are a green community, and it will open up more opportunities for us to actually score really well on those grants and actually obtain those grant funds.
Mr. Chairman, just on a final note, if we could have the building departments, anybody that has any questions. He did give us this pamphlet. It's just the quick high points of what the stretch energy code is about. It was a question for doing a small remodeling project, a kitchen or a bathroom. And he says, "Improving a kitchen or bathroom would not trigger required changes to the rest of the home, such as heating, roofs. It's only, it's only the system that you work, you know, that has to be brought up to code. That's just, that's just standard building."
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Motion is to accept the committee report, place on file, fable action on the order.
Mr. Chairman, we'll be excusing the gentleman.
It also needs to be amended. It also needs to be amended. That's why I didn't excuse him, and I'm sorry. We need to amend it to take effect July 1st. Is that what we're doing?
Motion made for fable action.
We can't amend it, right?
It comes effect anyway.
No, it may, it's an ordinance, needs to read.
Yeah, so our adatement wouldn't happen until September, so effectively, we're there anyway.
Okay, excuse with the customer, we thank them.
Thank you.
What's the motion before us, please?
The motion is to accept the committee report and place on file, fable action on the order.
Motion made to accept.
President, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion made to accept the committee report, place on file, fable action. Roll call vote.
Counselor Capone?
Yes.
Counselor Del Solo?
Yes.
Counselor Florio?
Yes.
Counselor Hamlin?
No.
Counselor McGonigal?
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon?
Yes.
Counselor Palatano?
Yes.
Counselor Sichetta?
Yes.
Counselor Sani?
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli?
No more added increases.
Counselor Makaze?
No. Eight, three.
Eight, eight, three days, Mr. President.
Thank you. Except the committee report has enrolled. Mr. Chairman, which one is the budget?
That's what I need to know.
Counselor Ford, we have anything?
Yes, I have a sign-in sheet. We have the item 16, please, because all the departments here have the...
Motion made to spend the rules and take item 16. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Court, read item 16.
Item number 16, it's a committee report that the fiscal year 2015 annual appropriation bill is submitted by his honor, the Mayor College Marie, in the sum of $154,488,765, pending the opinion of the city's list on the operating budget, as Executive Pompey passes the fiscal year 2015 City of Everett operating budget.
Balance before you.
Fable action on the order?
Second.
Accept the committee report and place on file.
Motion made.
On the motion?
Let's hear on the motion, Counselor Capone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to preface my remarks, and I thank all the department heads for coming here and sitting through the painful meeting so far. I want to preface my remarks on, we are very fortunate in the city to have so many hard-working individuals. The reality is, we've got a budget in front of us that we have to deal with, and I reviewed them for the budget hearing. I spent more time over the weekend. There just simply isn't enough money to do everything that's in the book. At least, I don't think so. And I'm gonna be suggesting cuts, and I don't know if the body wants me to just lay them out in total, or if we should just do one at a time, but whatever, whatever the will of the body is.
We can make a motion how we want to handle this, okay? So, um...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we take these, one item at a time, vote on them individually, and that we're there, each can be weighed on its own merit.
Our motion made to take each item individually and vote one at a time. I'm sorry, on the motion, Counselor Sani?
On the motion. I also like, so the department can come up here and speak on it, and why they need to have this before we make any cuts.
So, well, I would also like to make a motion to invite the mayor, chief of staff, Richard Viskey, the city order, for now, and then we can department, we can invite each department head if we have to.
Are you repeating what should have been done in the budget?
Well, we already went through the budget. We choose to do the same thing all over again now, so I believe that people should have the right...
Okay, well, Mr. Viskey, be appropriate to answer the questions? Or do you have to keep bringing?
If, if I may, what'll end up happening is, as we propose a particular item of the budget, that department head have the ability to come forward, have the opportunity to address it. That's the way I would suggest that we go about it.
Okay, so we have a motion made to, Counselor Palatano, your motion was to...
Was actually to address the items one at a time.
Motion was to address the cuts one at a time. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Counselor Capone.
Okay. I raised this at our, at our budget meetings, and, you know, we're gonna feel the pain collectively. I can't sit here and tell a department that I'm looking to cut their budget if I'm not willing to cut my own. So, the first proposed cut that I would make would be to reimbursable expenses of the city council to the effect of $22,000, which will still leave $2,000 per counselor for reimbursable expenses. So, I make a motion, we cut the reimbursable expense for city council by $22,000.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, on that motion?
On the motion?
What page?
I, I can't see cutting an expense account, because you don't know what's gonna happen. You don't know if the casino's coming in, if we have to go to special meetings. If we don't use it, we return it anyways. We returned how much money this year, $30,000?
$30,000.
Okay, so, it's not like we're gonna go out there and just spend the money because we feel like it, but there may be some things that we have to go to. Then what are we gonna do? We're gonna go to the mayor and tell him to give us the money back? I, I really disagree with this. I'm sorry.
And if I, if I may, the only reason that I would be against this is because this is coming up as our first year of the, of the, a real, a real whole year. And at the end of the year, if there's $100,000 we're gonna turn back, $140,000, we're gonna turn it back. So, I mean, I would be opposed to it. Maybe next year, I wouldn't have a problem with it, but this year, I would be, because we have given back $30,000 this year. That's just my personal opinion. You vote like you want. But the matter before us.
So, we're gonna go through the roll call?
Roll call.
Counselor Capone?
Yes.
Counselor Del Solo?
No.
Counselor Florio?
No.
Counselor Hamlin?
No.
Counselor McGonigal?
No.
Counselor McKinnon?
No.
Counselor Palatano?
Yes.
Counselor Sichetta?
Yes.
Counselor Sani?
No.
Counselor Simonelli?
Yes.
Counselor Makaze?
No.
Four days, seven days, Mr. President.
The $22,000 has failed. Counselor Capone?
The next cut that I would propose would be to inspection services. It's on page 22 in the book. We could have the department head before us.
Mr. Mac. Make a motion to invite Mr. Sopel. In favor? Excuse me. City services.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I know your department does a lot of work. Every department in this, in this building works so hard. You are very competent, you're very capable. We've got to try to make cuts when we can. The only cut that I'm recommending is to the overtime budget, and you've got lined up $37,000. I know when you were here during the budget hearings, the concern was that there were a lot of buildings that were coming online towards the end, so there was a concern that maybe we wouldn't be able to keep up with them. So, the cut, I think, is a modest one, requesting that we cut $10,000 to that, and just to help everybody work a little more efficiently. And if we have an issue, we can always give money back. We can't get it back. So, with these cuts, if we make a cut to a particular department, and it looks like they're really debilitated and they need additional appropriations, they could always come back and make the case. And my recommendation is $10,000 for overtime. I want to give you the opportunity to address that, tell me why that's a really bad idea, and we'll go from that.
Thank you, Counselor Capone. What I'd like to say is, that money was set aside for inspections, What I'd like to say is, that money was set aside for inspections, mainly for Waters Ave development and the Broadway Lofts project, inspections for occupancy permits, which requires us to walk through every building, every room, every closet, and to do that with what we have is two building inspectors to do that, a part-time electrical inspector and a part-time plumbing inspector. Now, that developer has paid over eight-hundred thousand dollars in permit fees to this city for those services, that's down at Broadway Lofts. I'm expecting a half a million dollar check out of Waters Ave. These are the services that we need to provide these people when they pay that. If I tell them, you've got to wait a week, because our plumbing inspector is busy doing a few inspections down on Broadway or on High Street, then we're not giving them the services that they paid for. We need to expedite developers' work, we don't want to hold it up. I see my job is facilitating and expediting to the limits of the code, not holding people up in the process of making money for businesses. So, we have a code, we have to follow it, part of the code requires inspections in a timely manner. I'd like to provide that, and I'd like to have the ability to say to my plumbing inspector or my electrical inspector, can you come in on Saturday and do these inspections all day long on Saturday, when that building is clear of subcontractors and walking through the building and instructing their progress? So, we can, we can make great strides if we're able to do that. If not, can we do it without it? Possibly, but keep in mind, the general fund has been enriched to do those things, to pay those people to do those things.
Counsel McKinnon?
If we're going to, like, have another budget hearing, we should probably invite up the mayor and Mr. Visque, so they can join in on it.
Mr. Chairman, I don't, I don't think we're having, I don't think we're having a budget hearing, we're addressing cuts, and we're giving department heads an opportunity to say why it's a bad idea.
Exactly.
And it's as simple as that.
Yeah.
Then...
Well, why don't we just do what we're doing right here? Do we have any more questions? Mr. Hamlin, or Counsel Hamlin?
Thank you. You said you had electrical inspectors?
We have a part-time electrical inspector, twenty hours, twenty hours a week, nineteen hours a week, nineteen hours a week.
And who else inspects?
There we have a plumbing inspector, eighty, he's seventy-nine-year-old John Palmer, he inspects fourteen hours a week, two-seven hour days. And then there's two building inspectors that are on for thirty-five hours a week apiece, that's seventy hours.
What do they inspect?
Building inspectors inspect all issues relevant to seven-eighty CMR, the building code, two-fifty-one CMR, which is the sheet metal code, and also aspects of the handicap accessibility, five-twenty-one CMR. So, we, that's a building code responsibility, plumbing inspector, two-forty-eight CMR, and the electrical inspector, the NEC two-thousand-and-eleven. All life safety issues that are very important and should not be skimmed are skipped in brand-new buildings like this.
I'm not being a smart eye or anything, but you know, if, if any one of the inspectors goes into a building and they look at the electrical panel and they check it all out and it takes them a half an hour, okay, I'm just guessing, whatever, whatever it takes. But they go to the next apartment, would it only take fifteen minutes?
So, the process of an electrical inspection, let's talk about that a little bit, maybe. So it's not as simple as just looking at a panel and saying, you know, that panel got all four screws to it. We go into every unit with a probe, and we push in every outlet that's supposed to be GFI-protected to make sure that it is, so that if a child touches a light switch and touches water at the same time, doesn't die, all right? We do things such as, I'm sure you heard the story in Lynn this week about two little boys, two-years-old and three-year-old, were scalded in hot water. That's because the plumbing inspector skimmed that inspection and didn't put a temperature gauge underneath the hot water. Hot water can only come out at a hundred and thirty degrees at, at the showerhead and one-twenty at the spout. Let's avoid that inspection, let's save some money and avoid that inspection, we don't want to do that.
What I'm just saying is, if you become accustomed to doing something, you know, and I, maybe I picked the wrong thing, you know, whatever it is, but a window, you could fall out a window too, you know, but, I mean, once you see that it's in, and it's in properly, and you can tell by looking at it, was it, would it make it easier to do more inspections now that you've been doing ten of them or fifteen of them, or is every single inspection going to take exactly the same amount of time?
I would say that you could say, I would say yes, every inspection would take the same amount of time, so each unit you go into, if that takes twenty minutes for a plumbing inspector times three-hundred units, you know, that's the kind of timeframe. But you know, there's no working elevators in these buildings when we're inspecting some of these things, you know, so we're walking up, John Palmer's walking up, eight flights of stairs.
Where's the elevator inspector?
They're not working, they're not operating yet till the building receives its occupancy permits.
Any more questions, Ms. Sopa, we can, we can now...
Excuse the customer, thanks.
And I, I refresh my motion to decrease the overtime budget by ten thousand dollars.
Motion made second to decrease the overtime budget by ten thousand dollars.
All right, Court. Will we do, roll call vote? Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel Del Solo?
No.
Counsel DeFlorio?
No.
Counsel Hamlin?
No.
Counsel McGonigal?
No.
Counsel McKinnon?
No.
Counsel Palitano?
Yes.
Counsel Sichetta?
Yeah, yes.
Counsel Sani?
No.
Counsel Simonelli?
Yes.
Counsel Makaze?
No.
Four yeas, seven days, Mr. President.
Mr. Chairman?
The cut has been defeated. Counsel Capone?
The next cut that I would recommend is to city services.
All due respect, but we've already been through this.
All due respect, on Thursday evening when we had this meeting, it was discussed whether we should be bringing this up Monday night, or if we should make these cuts Thursday, was it Thursday night? And what happened is collectively, we were requested to postpone it till this meeting to give the department heads the opportunity to be here and explain why it was not necessary. So the department heads are here, and I appreciate the fact that they waited throughout the entire meeting for it. I'll propose the cuts, if you don't want to go with the cuts, you can vote in the negative. The next cut that I propose...
Counsel, the motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, is city services. There are two areas of concern to me, the, and these cuts are, where they go with salaries are new positions, these are not existing positions where people currently being employed. The business manager assistant director position is budgeted for eighty-five thousand dollars. Part of what this individual was going to do was going to be asset management throughout the city. We have an assistant purchasing agent that was requested for similar opportunities. We also have a director of engineering for city services, which I think is necessary, that's ninety-five thousand. So, my motion is going to be addressing the salary line for eighty-five thousand dollars, removing that position, because I think there's a little bit of overlap with the purchasing agent. And we can have the city services before us to respond to it if you would like.
My motion to invite Mr. Makaw up, all in favor? I oppose. Counsel Capone?
I know we, we talked at the budget, and there's a couple of new positions, there's a bunch of working foreman positions, there's the city engineer position, there's the business manager position. Obviously, as I said that night, your department does a lot of work, that's why you take up so many pages in the budget. But the reality is, as wonderful as everybody is and as dedicated as everyone is, the bottom line is, we need to watch our bottom line. There's only so much to go around. If there were tons of money, I wouldn't, I wouldn't even be blinking an eye, because everything is going great, you know, everything looks great. But these are new positions, new hires, these are going to be new expenses to the taxpayers, and I'm seeing a little bit of, would it benefit your department? Without a doubt, it absolutely would. It'd help you run more efficient, it would help you do everything that you need to do. The problem is, there's a little bit of overlap between this particular position and the assistant purchasing agent. And I, I'm trying to find where I can, where we can make some cuts that won't hurt as much, but this is the opportunity to tell me why, and tell the council, why that's a really bad idea.
Thank you very much. The, this position, the business manager position, would be working with the asset manager in the purchasing department as far as what there is as far as, like, major equipment. And the example that I brought up last week was, the asset manager would be keeping track of the equipment and, you know, the procurement of that equipment and, and the, basically the end of the disposal of it. But the business manager's part was, what I was trying to emphasize was the vehicle replacement program itself. That is, that is the guts as to what the business manager is going to be doing as far as assets go in this particular situation. And a vehicle replacement program would be properly setting up a program that was funded either annually or one-time in a capital expenditure, to look at the best useful life of a piece of equipment, to look at, you know, repair costs and how much it costs per mile, per hour, or however, you know, the parameters that we have in this case. So when I made that statement of the assets, it was probably out of, not exactly, it was accurate, but it wasn't exactly accurate as to the, the whole thing. They would be, the business manager would be looking at a ten-million-dollar vehicle replacement plan throughout the city, and an example would be a pumper truck, six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar piece of equipment. If we set aside so much money every year and put a whatever, two percent, three percent inflation factor, plus, you know, what the optimum trade-in value we could get, we could be saving significant dollars instead of having one that is twenty-plus years old that really is worth more as scrap metal when we get down to the, to the point of either retiring it and sending it on its way. So, this position in, in that aspect alone would be a huge cost savings to the city. To put an exact dollar figure on it, I couldn't do that, but we're talking a pretty significant portion would be tied up in that. The other aspect, too, is to be maintaining, controlling the city services, our spending, our procurement, you know, making sure that the checks and balances are making sense with the line items for what is budgeted. And if we're going over budget, that person could be having that discussion with myself or with the asset manager, saying, we just can't do that because it is something that is budgeted for this amount, and we can't go any further because we're reaching our limit. Those are the parts that I see the business manager, as far as assets go, I don't see a lot of overlap as far as, you know, copying or duplicating duties. Oh, I have a list here of some bullets...
Counsel McGonigal?
I'm sorry.
Just, just very briefly to the counsel, I don't have a question for, for Mr. Makaw, but he can answer it. They did eliminate four or five positions that totaled a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars, that I'm looking at, and they're replacing with, with two positions that are close to that, you know, roughly a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, I, I think they're juggling it a little bit, and I could be wrong, but Mr. Makaw, could you just very briefly explain that? Because, you know, that's what I see. Special Service Craftsman, you've eliminated that, you've eliminated, you know, other craftsmen, whether they retired or whatever has happened with them. I only see the other two positions that you're creating.
We also had a transfer from ISD, the electrical and the junior electrical positions were switched from his, the ISD department and switched over to the city services department. Like you said, the, the junior engineer was a position, but we basically shifted the duties of that position to stormwater coordinator and left the junior engineer position out. So, what you're looking at really is to, to the business manager, the assistant, the city engineer, and also a foreman position for the mechanics, the mechanical foreman.
Counsel Simonelli?
Ah, yes, thank you. It's not a question, I just want to know what we're voting on here. Are we just voting to cut the business manager and keep the assistant?
You count, you count to reduce, I believe, the salary...
By eighty-five thousand.
...in the public works by eighty-five thousand.
That's right, you want to eliminate the business manager.
Well, it's not, it doesn't necessarily eliminate, you're reducing the salary.
The salary, yeah, I mean, the salary, of course, yeah. And you want to keep the assistant manager. The assistant manager would be, also would be there helping Julius.
You just reduce him... Counsel McKinnon?
Just one more, I just want to make sure that the assistant engineer is going to give, take someone a burden of Julius.
Correct, the, I kind of gave...
I have a favor to ask.
Okay.
Counsel McKinnon?
In your version, Mr. Makaw, why do we need these two positions, two more positions?
I had a, I have a bullet list of some primary functions of the, the business manager. This person would be responsible for managing the business of running a city services department, which I emphasized last week, it's, you know, a twenty-five, twenty-four and change million-dollar department, we have revenue coming in, we have revenue going out, we deal with major projects, multimillion-dollar projects, and we have several of them going on at, at the same time. We have forecasting for capital improvement needs, we need to find funding sources within the city, we need to find funding sources outside the city as far as grants, you know, other type of funding sources that we might not know, but, you know, we can, you know, absolutely take advantage of. This department...
So this person would be researching grants, this person would be handling the business...
Absolutely, this, this position would be tracking our spending, they would be, you know, it's kind of like a domino effect, the city, the new assistant city engineer would be more focused on the actual projects and the projects being dealt with on the street level, and the business manager would be looking at the projects on the funding side, if we're staying within our parameters, if we're staying within, you know, the scope of the project as far as, you know, financing goes, and what is, you know, being dished out. Change orders alone, I mean, the, right now we have Julius dealing with just change orders, being out with the project, dealing with reporting, dealing with, you know, site investigations.
He's tasked with almost everything in the whole city.
It's a laundry list of, of a lot of things that kind of need to help free up, so we could focus and start being more proactive instead of, you know, waiting and reacting or, or just basically having that catastrophe happen, there were, like, you know, it's a fire alarm fire, and we're spending all our resources on it, if we just spent, you know, a few weeks or two being proactive, it would have been avoided.
Now, the, there was another position that was in there, and that is for, with someone with a PE, correct?
That's the assistant, or the city engineer, the assistant director of city services engineering.
Now, how would that help us, by having that, that person or that individual have a PE license?
Right now, Julius is the only person that we have, and we need to, because of the fact that he doesn't have a PE, we have to look at a lot of outside, third-party companies like a Time Bond or a CDM or, you know, World Tech that has the engineering expertise with the PE required by, most states have, I would say most, all states have their own licensing for professional engineers.
So that would save us on the consultants that we're paying currently, right now? If I, if I may...
Excuse me, this will be, we're getting into a budget meeting.
It's going to be a whole second budget.
The salary, what, what is before you?
What I'm trying to do, Mr. President, I, I don't interrupt anyone while they're speaking, right? Now, I shouldn't be interrupting.
We're getting into the budget again.
Now, number one, I'm asking the gentleman that's up here again, for the second time, to actually explain himself why he's doing this, and I should be entitled to that, and we shouldn't, and we shouldn't be worried about time if we're going to have a, a second budget hearing.
We're not talking, we are having a second budget, the matter before everybody here is the cuts that are here.
I'm trying to figure out which way to cut, that's what I want to do here.
There's no such thing as, excuse me right here.
There's two spots that you're looking to cut.
You're looking at two spots, you're looking at one salary amount.
Mr. Chairman, it's not even a spot, it's a salary line. We cut a number the department is free to do with the remaining budget, whatever they want to do.
That's the issue before, so it doesn't make a difference.
But it's going to impact both of those positions, in doing so.
Well, if it doesn't, maybe you don't need both of those positions, maybe you don't need one of them. The idea is the salary line here, that's...
But the other night, we wanted to keep, you know, one and try it out and all this stuff, so...
Well, that was the other night. Tonight, it's not, you don't talk about a position, you're talking about the bottom line of the salary, that is what's before you today.
Okay.
And everything that we've discussed, we discussed last week, last three...
We've discussed it three, three nights in a row, you're right, I accept that.
All right, so there's no need for fourth, let's, the matter before you, the matter before you is to...
So why we, why we even question these people?
Reduce, reduce the salary line by eighty-five thousand dollars.
My motion is to reduce the salary line to public works by eighty-five thousand dollars. Call, roll call vote.
Counsel Capone?
There's one of the, there's one of the cut in the department, so...
Okay.
Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel Del Solo?
No.
Counsel DeFlorio? Counsel Hamlin?
Yes.
Counsel McGonigal?
No.
Counsel McKinnon?
No.
Counsel Palitano?
Yes.
Counsel Sichetta?
Yes.
Counsel Sani?
No.
Counsel Simonelli?
Yes.
Counsel Makaze?
Yes.
So the, the order...
Six yeas, seven days.
The, the salary line has been cut by eighty-five thousand dollars. Counsel Capone?
Mr. Chairman, there's one other area in the city services, it's the overtime account, not the sand and ice, it's the, the general overtime account. I appreciate your candor on the point, and again, with each of these cuts, I want everyone to be very clear, that this is not an indictment on anybody. We are very, very fortunate to have excellent personnel in the city. It's a matter of trying to tighten the belt across the board and try to do what we can to reduce the burden on the taxpayers. With this particular issue, the overtime budget, my concern was that I had received calls about street sweepers and plants being watered and swept on holidays and on Sundays, and during the budget meetings it came out that, that's double time and double time and a half. So from that line item, I'm looking to reduce one-hundred thousand dollars.
Counsel Paul Tomlin?
Thank you. And I, and I, and I agree with that, I'm going to, I'm going to second that. The main reason, and I would like to get a sense, Mr. Makaw, what your interpretation of what overtime is, what is, what is the purpose in any business or in the operation of overtime?
Overtime is anything above and beyond the normal work schedule, that can't be done during a normal schedule.
Right, I, I, let me, let me rephrase that, okay, because I, I'm not looking for a dictionary explanation, I'm asking, is your, you as a manager, how do you interpret the use of overtime in managing both your department and your, your budget? I know you've, you've made several comments today regarding controlling spending, checks and balances, and the thing is, my concern in any, any business I've ever taken, overtime is a, is something to be utilized only in emergency purposes or when, when normal hours and normal time cannot fit the bill. Is that the case? I mean, I, I listen to my colleagues' comments regarding street sweeping, and, and I'm not going to get into the details of it, but I do get the sense in conversations I've had at various levels in, in the department, that overtime has become almost a, a traditional type of thing. Now, you know, if you have two-hundred-and-fifty thousand for overtime, your goal is to spend, or at least to not overspend two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. A lesser amount would be the same as well, if you had a goal of two, if you had a budget of two-hundred thousand, your goal would be to not overspend that two-hundred thousand. know, base, we are looking at ways to be able to cut it. You do have the, sort of having the largest budget to control, and looking at the, only two other departments that have significant amounts of overtime as well, excuse me, three departments, we're talking education and public safety. Those are areas that are more, much more difficult to cut. But if you could give me an idea how you see the utilization on your, on your team of overtime, I really would like to have a better understanding of that to be able to make a qualified vote here.
Thank you very much. The overtime is, is, in our business of public works, city services, it's the nature of the beast. There are things that happen, there are scheduled overtime opportunities, and if there are, excuse me, an emergency situation where a playground, you know, you know-
Chairman, can I give a ready to speak for a moment?
Mr. Chairman, I actually would like the department head to finish his answer, I don't see a need for that.
I'd like to help Mr. Markart, put him in the seat now for six months, can I, can I?
I'd like to make a motion to invite the mayor up.
Second motion.
Second.
Motion made to invite the mayor up, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
If we could.
I will, yeah, I will be-
Mayor, could you possibly be down by Jason?
I would love to go.
Yeah, sure, that'd be great.
So you can move.
You know, I have to agree with Councilman McKinnon, this feels like it's another budget hearing, and to not have the CFO and the chief of staff here, it seems to be not right. But I'm going to talk about overtime, overtime is an issue, and if you cut it, it's fine. But we bury people on weekends. We, we have water breaks on weekends during the week at nighttime overnight, we have sewer backups, we have ball fields that are inundated with filth, graffiti, that we sometimes just can't get to, potholes in the wintertime, streets that need to be salted in the wintertime, streets that need to be plowed. What Richard wants to do, the CFO, is actually be able to, with the business manager position that we could just cut, would to be able to, have that person would have been able to exactly give you the information when, when, how we're spending our overtime. We won't be able to do that now. That business manager would have detailed how we spent overtime, what departments get it, what days, what, and how it's being done, if it's watering plants. It seems like everyone has a problem watering plants. But does everyone like the rotaries and the islands and all the nice flowers that we have? I know I do. All the residents that call me like it. I don't know what residents call you and complain about street sweeping, but I don't like filthy streets. I don't like islands that aren't irrigated or flowers that aren't planted. I like a city that resembles a nice place. So you're cutting positions that we've been trying to get for years. The business, the business management position, and what's going to happen is, by cutting eighty-five thousand, I will have to let some craftsmen go or look in other departments and cut some other departments, because I will be hiring a business manager around the department. It's a twenty-five million dollar department. We need this person to, not about assets, and asset management is totally different things, but this is, this, this department, you have your DPW director stuck in an office doing paperwork all day. He needs to be outside working with the superintendents and the, and the crew of men that we have, and women, making sure the job is getting done on a daily basis, working on stormwater stuff. But I know we're talking about the hundred thousand dollars. These are the things we're doing with that money. If you don't want it, if you don't, we, we have residents calling us on a daily basis. Counsel McKinnon will tell you, down on the park is a softball, he runs a softball league down there, they're calling us all, all the time. Barrels that need to be emptied, track, things that, you know, grass that needs to be cut, striping of parks. We can't do all the things with, with thirty-s somewhat men and women. We can't fix potholes, we can't fix sidewalks, we can't do, clean parks, we can't work on our municipal buildings, like this place, that our city services guys did. So we had to take resources out of the streets to, to, to clean this place up and fix this place up for you. We could have just gladly outsourced it and had someone else come in and do it, and you wouldn't have seen that. We would have just spent that from the operating budget. You know, we do return free cash, we'll have a, you know, you say you don't want to, you want to cut this, cut this, well, we will have free cash at the end of this budget also. We will, we, after this budget that you appropriated tonight, at the end of the day, you'll have free cash again. We won't spend all that money, of course not. We'll, we'll give it back to the taxpayers. We can, if you want, and when our free cash is certified, if you want to make a cut to taxes, we can make that cut. We can do that this year, I've always proposed it to you. We'll do it again this year. If you feel that people are at their throats pain, we can make a cut. I've always done it. I've sent numbers down here, two, four million dollars every year to cut the taxes. This is the, this is my budget. You know, you, so you're asking a department head who, who's been here, how long?
It'll be a year, July 7th.
A year, July 7th. He still hasn't even got to know what I want for a city. I think a lot of you do like what's happening here in the city. We, I cut a million-five from this budget. A million-five I cut from this budget already. I let my department have something what they needed, and then I cut it. I cut it a million-five. I could have left it at a million-five more, and then you would have cut it tonight, and you would have made your cuts tonight. But I did that for you already. I cut a million-five. You see those numbers where it says department, the departments proposed what they wanted? I cut it a million-five already. So I, it just, it just, I'm asking for positions to help me operate the city. Transportation planners, a business manager, an asset manager, these things are people who are going to save us money. At the end of the day, you know, I like the motion you made, Counsel Capone, we can give you a year and see what these people do. You know, and I want to be able to come back in the air and say, this is what the business manager did for the city, these are the, we have contractors working in the city, National Grid, they have subcontractors working, we have contractors, like I talked about earlier, we have about eight, nine million dollars in water and street and infrastructure in the streets. We don't have that many superintendents or engineers or, or people to oversee what they're doing. I mean, they can come back and say, whoa, you know, we have this change order for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Here, here you go. We had it happen on the shoot library. We were able to work, you know, work it back and get that money back off. That, that stuff happens on a daily basis. It, it happens. I mean, we just did the manning of this field, we just did this Goniola Park, we have a bunch of parks coming down the pipeline, taut lots that are being redesigned. It'd be nice to have a business manager to be able to, to tell you, yeah, you did get, you know, you, you did get this stuff, this isn't in place, these bills are being paid, the, this, this bill from this contractor. How many times have emergency contractors come in and do water, a water job, and Jay looks at us, scratches his head and says, you're charging us this much for this? I mean, and then we have no backup. We have, you know, it's months later, that, you know, that, that stuff happens. I mean, these people are put in a place to, to put checks and balances in. You know, and I would like the CFO to come up, and I know, I know my chief of staff, both of them who deal with all these issues, and why we came up with this budget, why we need these positions, also to talk again. And I don't care if we stay here till midnight, I mean, I'm fine with it. But, you know, to say we water flowers on overtime, you know, the hanging baskets, honestly, I think they look great. I think the islands look good. If we have, we're spending a little money, yeah, maybe we are spending, I don't know, ten or twenty thousand dollars a year in overtime, maybe, on watering and stuff. But it's green space, people like that. I mean, you had a woman who come up here, talked about the Seven Acre Park. We have a beautiful redesign of that Seven Acre Park, that's, includes an area for dogs, but it also includes lots of open space for residents. You know, I know I'm going on, but to make, I want to be able to give you a breakdown, with this business manager, I will be able to give you a breakdown of how we're spending our overtime. You know, you know, I talked about the, the, the asset manager is totally different. I know they talked about assets here, but that, that's a total different animal. I mean, you could, you guys can, I'm sorry to use that word, this city council, we don't even realize what we have for equipment in this community. I don't even know what we have. Couldn't tell you, couldn't tell you what Mayor Hamlin ordered for two years ago, and what Mayor Regutia ordered, and what we're bringing. We have no one to control this stuff. You know, that's, the business manager will be also responsible for the, the gas, the consumption. We had employees that weren't really friendly with the gas, okay? So we, we want to put a, we want to make sure that all the gas that's being used is being used in city vehicles only, and nowhere else. You know, that's something that the business manager will take care of. You know, working with, you know, Jay has done a wonderful job working with stormwater management, the EPA, in, in the big picture for DPW. To be able to do that and run the department, you know, by not having someone to help you run it, you have a water and sewer enterprise fund, that basically, I want to, I want to thank the CFO for doing a good, good job, and my chief of staff who really kept it together all these years. But, you know, there's, there's so many other things going on in the city. It's just, you know, to make these small cuts, they're not even cuts that the taxpayers are even going to fail. It's not going to change, it's not going to change their tax bill. It won't change it at all. There, no difference, no, no difference. All it's going to do is make our, our ability to work, to not get certain things done. That's what's happening here. We're not, you know, I've, I've been here now for seven years, hope I can be here for a little while longer, and trying to make this a better place, and I'm seeing, and I was always against bringing more people on, but these aren't just, just jobs to, these are specialized positions with specialized qualifications and qualities to run, to run a department effectively. And, you know, to make, I, it, I made the cut for you, a million-five. Next time, maybe I'll just leave the million-five there, so that we can, you know, make cuts. But I, I did that, I really did. You know, we're close to four million under the levy. And in November, when our free cash, October, when our free cash is certified, I can lower it even more if you'd like. We can do that collectively. But I know you all want, I know Counsel Napal Towns, you've been after, after me to do Flora Street Park for I don't know how long, that's getting done. You know, Councilman Sani's been after, she wanted, she's been wanting a dog park for about five years now. Everything in this budget is, and I've said this before, everything in this budget is what you have all asked me for to do. Your residents call me, Council McGonigal calls me, this resident, you know, has a water issue on this street, pipes are broken. It is? It's five o'clock in the afternoon, person's not getting water? Call a contractor in. If our guys won't come in, we call a contractor in. I'm not going to have a resident without water, or, or, that's not going to happen. If we can't get our, our guys to go in, we have to call a contractor in. And that's where this money from overtime is going. If, we're doing it. If it's not doing it, it's going to a contractor. That we still, we're still going to do.
Thank you. Matters before us, uh-
If I may.
I was actually still, I wasn't finished, though, if I could.
Okay.
Okay, I was in the middle of, I was in the middle of asking Mr. Markart questions when the motion was made to bring the mayor up. Okay, so I would like to finish up.
Sure, go ahead, finish.
First of all, Mr. Mayor, I don't want you to get the wrong idea. The only reason why I resisted having you come up immediately was nothing personal.
I know that.
The reason is, and you hit it right on the head, we don't know Mr. Markart. I don't know Mr. Markart, he's been with the, with the city a year. I'd love to come down in the course of the day and get to know him better, but unfortunately, I can't take a day off from work, I got to feed my family. So the only way I can get the questions I need is to ask the questions here. And allowing him to be able to answer my questions is really all I was trying to do. So that's the only reason why I was blocking to not come up, to let him finish. So I, I do want you, I don't want you to get the wrong idea, okay? It's nothing like that. I really do want to hear a little bit more about it. And again, I'm not, I'm not-
And not all department heads are like Jimmy Sopa, who can talk to you about every issue and do it effectively and persuasively. He's probably one of the better. Mr. Markart is very well, very well skilled in his job, but I think he's a little, not to, and he's right next to me, but he's a little shy, and he, he's not like, like the guy behind me who's worked in municipalities for many, many years.
Well, again, I understand that. And of course, our own experience up here, I know a few weeks ago, I had given some brief about the, about the storm drain, and yet we had a flood back on Cottage Street like less than a week later. So I'm very anxious to how those studies, things like that, will come about. But I, I do want to, I do want to know a little, I do like to get a little bit better idea of how, what he feels about the use of overtime. I have no problems with, with cost of pipe breaks, you've got emergencies, you've got to get this stuff done. And, you know, I have tried to, to avoid bringing things up like watering plants, because I know it's not that, not that simple either. But I do need, do think that we need to have some, we're going to be on the hook a year from now to be able to justify ourselves when people get our tax bills. And everybody looks at their tax bills differently, okay? And that's where we're coming from, you know. Yeah, maybe a hundred thousand dollar cut, but it's a cut. Sometimes a cut is, is in principle a loan, okay? So I, if, if it's okay, I would like to get an, an explanation on, from you, how, how you feel overtime should be, if you could complete my original question.
I, thank you. I think the mayor answered it, like you said earlier, hit the nail right on the head. The unforeseen stuff is, is something that is just the nature of the beast in the, in the work that we do here at Public Works. There are things that are scheduled overtime, like, you know, if we have a festival or an event, a cultural event, or the event that's coming up that you, you heard earlier with the autism run, stuff like that is the stuff that is scheduled overtime, and we contractually have, you know, everyone that goes out, they have a minimum amount that they get, and it, if it's on a Sunday, it's, it's, contractually, we have to pay the double time, like, you know, the other part two is the seven days a week. There are, there are, you know, I, I look, I try to look at things holistically as far as overtime goes. There, there are, I know managers that would rather run a very skinny staff, and their, their thought processes, it's cheaper to have overtime than to have an extra employee or two. So it's all how you look at the, the big picture. I think we have some improvements to make, and we're moving in that, the right direction. There are things that we could better control as far as overtime goes, and I'm working diligently, daily on that with the mayor and the chief of staff and Mr. Vizkay.
What percentage of your overtime do you think that is affected by that?
If I had a bit, no. It is, that's a hard question to answer, because I could have a week where five people would be out sick, or, you know, if it's a school week and people are on vacation for their kids, you know, my overtime fluctuates weekly, daily, actually.
All right, thank you. Counsel Capone.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, through you, to, to the mayor, with all due respect, and I said this to about every employee in this building throughout the city, they work hard. These are good people, and this is far from a witch hunt. And I think they all work very hard and they do a good job. The problem is, we're all trying to do more with less. We had the school department here the other night for the budget, we're told that per capita, we're in like the bottom three of the state. How do we afford this kind of a budget? It's, it's hard. I know, in perfect world, no questions, do everything you got to do, get the job done, it looks great, the flowers look gorgeous, they do. But the thing is, is when you sit in there and you're trying to figure out where, if anywhere, can be cut, and I do appreciate the fact that you have gone through the budget, you've already done an initial list of cuts. That's not lost on me, I get that. But we're at the meeting, and as beautiful as the flowers look, if, if we've got to pay someone double time and a half to water them, or to sweep the streets, I think we need to restructure when we're sending them out there. Does it mean the street's going to be, eh, another day or two? Yeah. Will the flowers suffer a little bit? Yeah. You know, maybe we need to find plants that'll be a little hotter in between waterings. But I think that, at the end of the day, we have to request even more out of our department heads. We have to get them to stretch it the extra mile. And again, this is far from any kind of a knock on you or you, saying, hey, Jesus, it's not getting done. It's the reality of the world we're in. We are in a very tough economy, and we're in a city that per capita doesn't, doesn't, isn't very affluent. So we want to provide as many service as we can, and kudos to you for, for trying to do that at every turn, but I think we need to pull that in a little bit, and that's why I'm looking to pull that in. Now, when we pull from a salary line, as you well know, it doesn't mean that job's gone. You just restructure your budget, you figure out what's most important to you, and you, and you work it from there. And the one thing I've said throughout the entire process is, I'm far from infallible. You know, you go and you make a suggestion, and it looks great on paper, and then it's a disaster. You can always come back and say, look, this is what's happened in the short run, this is what we need, this is why we need the funding. We can always appropriate additional funds. But by pulling back some money, we're just asking everybody to take, to tighten the belt in a little bit, to run a tighter ship, and let's do what we can to serve the, the citizens of the city as best we can, on as tight a budget as we can. And that's the only purpose for it. So please, I don't want anybody be thinking that I'm singling people out, saying that, you know, I don't like what you've been doing, or how you're doing it. It's the reality of the world we're in right now. And that's where my motions are coming. They'll be voted on, if they're voted down, they're voted down. Tomorrow's another day. If they're voted, we go forward with it, department's tightened the belt, we try to get the job done. And that's absolutely where I'm coming from.
I'd like to question you, thank you to Mayor De Maria and Mr. Markart. The motion made before us is to, to cut one hundred thousand dollars, is that right, Counsel Capone?
Correct, from overtime.
From the overturned budget.
Not the, not the sand and ice, just the, the city service salaries overtime.
The city, city services overturned.
Yes, we did.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Counsel Del Sol.
No.
Counsel Hamlin.
No.
No.
Councilor McGonagall.
No.
Councilor McKinnon.
No.
Councilor Palatano.
Yes.
Councilor Chetum.
Yes.
Councilor Sani.
No.
Councilor Simonelli.
No.
Councilor Markadee.
Yes.
Four yeas, seven nays.
Uh, six and four, boy, boy, six.
I'm sorry, six and four, you're right. Four, four yeas, six nays.
The overtime, uh, cut has been, uh, defeated.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, there are, I, we have everyone else in the audience, and let me just list the individual departments that I have a question on. We can let the, the other poor folks go home, 'cause they're gonna be back here tomorrow. Um, Planning and Development, Department of Human Services, and the Rec Department. If, if anyone else has cuts for any other department, we, we should single that out. If not, we should allow them to, to head home and thank them for hanging around.
Second there. Uh, Mr. Markard, you could, uh, go, everybody's customary thanks. Thank you very much. Uh, Councilor Capone, who do we have next?
The, uh, next department is Planning and Development.
Motion made to have, uh.
If you please have Jamie Exon in front of us. Thank you.
Motion made second there, Mr. Erickson before us.
Jamie, I'm just, I'm just following through with what I did the other night. And first, and like I said, I, I, I think you are a phenomenal employee. You are everywhere. You work harder than almost anybody I know. All right? With that said, there was a salary line. We were looking to bring on a traffic engineer. My, uh, it was about sixty-seven, sixty-eight thousand dollars. Part of the concern was that in the event that the casino comes in, it's gonna create a serious issue that we're gonna have to get on top of. If we eliminate a position such as that, uh, in, in its entirety, you'll never be able to catch up. Uh, a proposal I made the other night, and I'm just gonna restate it tonight, is cutting from the salaries line forty thousand dollars, which is only a portion of the job, because I think that there were about four or five other, uh, individuals in the department, and I know everyone's carrying a lot of weight in that department. It would still give you the ability to bring someone in part-time to address some traffic issues. And then in the event, and hopefully, the, the casino vote is favorable for the city, we could always have you come back and say, look, we need more. And I also had the caveat that if, if we just, and I think my, my term was busting at the seams. You come down, you tell us, look, look what you did to me. I need more money. I'm more than happy to address it at that point. I would rather start with cutting out, and then if we needed to, and we said, Jesus, it didn't work out, we gotta add more money to it. I'd rather address it that way. Because who knows? You're extremely capable, and you could restructure it in such a way, and, and everyone can restructure it in such a way that maybe we could do without it and we save that much more. Now, I know that a lot of grants come through your office, and that's huge. Uh, so my thought process is I'm just trying to find where I can. There are quite a few people in the department. I know everybody is working hard. But that might be an opportunity where we can try to save some money. And that's why I'm proposing it's a forty thousand dollars, uh, cut to the salary line. And I'll give you the opportunity to, to address that to the council.
Uh, Mr. Erickson.
Sure, thank you. Um, I can, I certainly don't envy being in the position that you guys are in, having to look at the budget from a very critical eye. I can say, from a transportation perspective, looking at the future vision for the city, looking at what the mayor wants to do, what this council wants to do, the opportunities that we have at our fingertips, um, we're prime for this position right now. Uh, I could certainly use that position to help out not only with everything that the mayor and, and even Jay Markard was talking about, all the street projects. That person can certainly help out with some of the demands of project managing some of these roadway improvements, or even designing some of them, depending on the quality of the, the qualifications of the person that we have on board. But then also going towards additional funding that could help us secure, and, and when it comes to transportation projects, we're talking about larger scale sums of money. I know we passed the Green Communities Act, or the Stretch Code, to help us secure green community designation. That's two hundred fifty thousand dollars. A lot of these transportation improvement projects or, or funding sources are in the millions of dollars that we're talking about here. And it's but for my, even with my current staff, the capacity that I have, I, I am not putting the best effort forward that I'd like to put forward. You know, my time, my time is, 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 uh, it's, it's stretched as it is. I certainly do my best to do, uh, all that I can for this community. I think it was a fantastic community. And I just see so much opportunity and so much potential, especially when it comes to transportation. We, we, the, the casino project is certainly one of those projects that I can see coming down the pipeline. And even, uh, when I started, the position wasn't even that, coming down the pipeline, and when I started working here, has been a, an amazing, uh, project to be a part of, but also an amazing time consumer when it comes to even just reviewing the weekly meetings that I've had with the Wind Transportation folks, that quite frankly, I just don't have the expertise or the, or the ability to put towards reviewing every single document that they're proposing. And I kinda just have to go with, with the faith that they're doing it in their best effort. Yes, we do have outside support helping us, but having somebody internally to really dive into the details of even that project as it currently exists is something that I could have used a year ago. And, and that's just a small component of, of what the, the job for this might be. We all have our own concerns about traffic and transportation running through this community, whether it's timing lights in the square better, or looking at small neighborhood improvement projects with crosswalks, with traffic calming improvements, with, with other, just, uh, you know, even looking at one-way to two-way street patterns. This person can provide that level of expertise to the, to reviewing those proposals and really make sure that we're doing and putting the best, we're doing the project at, at the most efficient way possible, but also putting the best foot forward for the city. And so I, I, I'd almost gamble that if, if you're willing for me to come back in a, in a few months to say that I'm bursting at the seams, I might be back here January first or July first and ask for, for the additional funding. So, um, I, I just do think it's, it's something that would go a long way. Um, and looking at other communities similar to us, um, Somerville has a traffic engineer, if not multiple, Cambridge has multiple. I know they even have one person that just focuses on neighborhood transportation demand, let alone bigger picture transportation and design services. Um, Lowell, where I used to work, we had a trans, traffic engineer in-house that helped us make sure that we're using Chapter Ninety funding appropriately, doing line striping appropriately, doing all the things that, you know, right now, we, we manage, but we aren't really capitalizing on the true potential of using some of those funding, because we don't have the level of expertise in-house to really maximize, um, how we're using the money and designing in-house, uh, these projects in the most efficient manner. We do often look to outside support, and, and that does cost quite a bit of money when it comes to running these projects.
And Jamie, with the partial funding in that position, you know, at least we could get the ball rolling and see what kind of results we're getting from that. Is that something you think you could work with, or you really absolutely need to have a full-time person?
Well, with, with some of the funding of this, it's gonna take us, even if we were to have the approval today, we'd still have to advertise the, the, the job and get it out on the streets. Um, so it would likely be a little while before we would even have that person on the books to start paying. Um, and that is an annual salary starting from July one to June thirtieth. So there is naturally going to be, um, a timeframe whereby we won't be spending the money on that position. My concern is that if we don't have the go-ahead to have a full-time position now, knowing that the gaming commission is coming down the pipeline in September with the decision, knowing with the demands that we have, even during our current construction season, if I, if we can't get some of these positions filled, in, in my case, this position filled within the next, you know, month or two, and have it be a committed position for this person. One, I might not get the most highly qualified candidate for the job. I think we've done a very good job at, at getting high-quality candidates. I think we have the, the current senior staff that the mayor put together is probably one of the best, uh, that I've seen. So I, I guess I'm just a little concerned as to how the timing would work on, on that.
And, and I understand that. And, and the concern is, when you're, when you're cutting salary lines, when jobs aren't filled, you're not hurting anyone directly. Indirectly, the department's office and all that. I would hate to go out and fund a position, and then it doesn't pan out, and now we're telling someone who's actually working that we're looking to cut, you know, the salary lines. That's my biggest concern, my biggest fear. The, the one thing that, when I went door-to-door, the biggest issue I had from constituents was taxes and spending. That was their concern. They thought we're spending too much as a community. They thought taxes were too high. Um, so that's why I'm trying to take an extra eye. And I know that the budget's been reviewed. It's been reviewed by experts. It's, uh, it's been reviewed and it's been reduced. The mayor's offices voluntarily reduced different things. But I took an extra eye and I said, okay, this is where I think we can do some stuff. So that's, that's where I'm coming from. So I, I appreciate what you're having to say. Um, I'm gonna reiterate the motion on forty thousand. It's still gonna leave funding for that position, albeit a part-time, uh, situation. But, and again, if it turns out that it, it didn't work out, you've got my phone number. You call me up and say, hey, you bad man, look what you did. And, you know, we'll get right back on top and we'll see what we can do. But I'm just trying to follow through on the promise I made to the residents that I'm gonna do what I can to try to pull expenses in. So I, I appreciate, you know, your comments.
What's the motion?
Can I just add?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, Jamie's trying to be really gentle in like here and trying to not, uh, ruffle feathers. But, um, the, the, the transportation planner for me is, is someone that, um, would be at the, all the mass DOT meetings. Uh, Jamie goes to him now, and, and sometimes he could be at those meetings for hours, um, two, three hours, four hours in a day, being a mass DOT meeting. The, uh, the reason why, we really haven't seen transportation equity here in Everett, is you can see the greater Boston cities, every city is connected by T, but Everett. Um, we don't have a civil line. We don't have commuter rail stop. We don't have any connection to any T stations, uh, only by bus. Um, and if you, if you're thinking about the taxpayer, think about the taxpayer who has to take his or her car into Boston to drive and up, or drive to a T station and pay at that T station, um, how about getting one right near their home? Down by the Bike to the Sea, down, down on Water's Ave area. Be able to walk over to a, a, a civil line extension stop or a, 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 a little bit bridge over to Commercial, oh, to Commercial Street in Medford, to connect it to Wellington Station. Uh, those are the things, uh, we're looking to ease the traffic in neighborhoods and, and put it onto the main streets, rather than having all these side streets and people cutting down to people's neighborhoods. That's what a transportation planner does. Um, you know, works to get, uh, funding for a city, a tip day, uh, like we just got that funding, well, we got the, uh, the, the, the money, the, the notice to move forward to the next step of a nine million dollar project. Uh, that's what a transportation planner will do. Um, it'd be, you know, safe streets initiatives. Um, all those initiatives that Jamie's working on today, that, uh, you know, he could be doing other things. Um, that I'd like him to do more design and more parks, or, or really bring in more development into the community, uh, looking at parcels on Route Sixteen or other series areas, and talking to hotel developers and that type of work. That's, that's the type I need my economic development director doing. Not working on transportation issues, not working on bike paths, not working on designs of parks. Um, that, that, that's where, if you really want the city to grow, um, this is where that, that happens. And to, to have forty thousand dollars or cut, or cut that, and to offer someone a position and not even guarantee him a full-year salary, you'll get no one to apply to the position. Um, we'll, we'll be down here, like Jamie said, July one, looking for the rest of the money. Um, it, it's, every good city has a good transportation planner. This city is in dire need of some sort of connect, some sort of connectivity to the T stations. We need, we need a civil line to stop. Stopping at the malls in Chelsea, it'd be nice to get that to run along Second Street. Uh, you'd see a whole new, different look on Route Sixteen and Second Street, or coming into the two, the Charleston offs. People are able to get onto a, uh, civil line. Uh, you'll see those, uh, new developments, the chat, the Bat yard. You'll see more of that on the other side of the highway. Uh, that's, that's the kinda stuff a transportation planner will do. So I would ask that you wouldn't cut it.
Jamie, I, I, I really do value your judgment, your opinion. In, in your personal opinion, if this position is left in, because one of the biggest issues that we're facing, and this is one that I can turn to the taxpayer and say I'm okay with, is traffic. We get bottle-jammed traffic all over the place. Will this position alleviate these issues?
Not right away. Yeah, obviously not right away.
Well, what kind of, no, nothing's right away. So what kind of timeframe do you think we're looking at?
The, the, this position can be a designated person that can be the point person with Mass DOT, with MBTA, with all the other state and local agencies on really addressing a lot of these traffic challenges that we do have in the city. It's not gonna alleviate it overnight by any means, but it will certainly be able to push the envelope on a more, more full-time basis with these agencies, uh, to make sure that Everett, like, like the mayor mentioned, has an equal stake at the table. Um, I've been attending a lot of these meetings, uh, at the MPO with Mass MBTA, with Boston Transportation Department folks, with, uh, Mass dot engineers, and quite frankly, I just don't have the skills or the, or the, the skills, the, the skill set, the timing. I'm, I know enough to be dangerous, but I don't know enough to truly know how we should or could be pushing the envelope on, on these improvements that, that.
And I do, I do think it's an important enough issue. Number one concern that was raised to me was spending and taxes. Number two was traffic. So with that said, I'll withdraw the, the motion on the cut with, with regards to salary line on this one. I, I have no further questions to them.
Motion made second to withdraw the, uh, forty thousand deduction on the salary line. All in favor?
I agree.
Oppose? Uh, council, next one.
The next cut is.
Councilor Chetum, excuse me. Councilor Chetum.
I've got, I've got too mad. Uh, I'm all set with, uh, Planning and Development. So thank you very much.
Customary, thank you. Thank you very much. Who, who's up next?
It's Department of Human Services.
Department of Human Services.
There was a, a new position that was being sought, which was the, um, the Community Health Specialist. That was, um, thirty thousand, it was proposed at thirty thousand dollars. And again, you know, we wanna do what we can. We wanna try to promote the best we can for our residents. But I look at this, and I, I look at this, and it's, it's such a good idea that there has to be a grant out there for something like this. And I'd rather see us pursue a grant as opposed to make it a, a financial burden to the taxpayer. If you could please address that.
Okay, the, the reason, um, I requested this position in the budget is the mayor's been really concerned about the rates, the increased rates of obesity in the city. It fits really well down at the seniors' center, because I'm remodeling the kitchen in the Conley Center. Nutrition is extremely important, and we will start with seniors, because seniors have a lot of chronic diseases where if they had proper nutrition, they probably would be able to manage their diseases better. The other thing that I get a lot of questions on is, um, low-income immigrants say healthy food is too expensive. The nutritionists could explain to them how to shop for healthy foods, how to prepare it to keep their families healthier, not spending it on, you know, fast foods, things like that. So this community health specialist will not only help the seniors, they'll go into the, with the low-income communities. They'll be doing presentations. They'll be doing TV shows. They'll be going into the schools, because obesity is a problem with a lot of the school-aged children. So as far as grants goes, I have applied for many grants. And I don't have one right now that I know of that I could apply for, for the community health specialist.
And, and, and just on that line, when we're talking about schoolchildren and trying to reinforce, positize theirs there, I'm sure they're already doing programs like that in the school department. And it's a great idea. But I think it's such a great idea that there absolutely has gotta be federal funds or state funds to, to fund a program like that. And that's, I would rather see the city pursue that as opposed to creating a position that's gonna be borne exclusively by the taxpayers. So that's the only reason why this position is raised, this salary line is, is, is being cut. Again, it doesn't mean that that has to be the salary that goes. It could be anything you wanna do. But, but I think that it's such a good idea, it's such a good topic, that there has to be funding and grants out there. And as far as, uh, dealing with the schoolchildren, I'm sure they're doing something like that in the school department. And I'm just trying to tighten the belt. That, that's all I'm doing. So that's why my motion is to reduce that line by thirty thousand dollars.
Councilor, uh, Sani.
Caroline, um, I see here that you already have a lot of grants that you're already funding your.
Yes.
And there's like three positions that, in there that you know of?
Yes, that I get partial grant funding for. I also get, uh, grants for the elderly transportation. And I mean, that budget alone is over seventy thousand a year, and half of it, fifty-three thousand I get, you know, state grant for. I get federal grants for emergency services. I get some grants to help with, uh, English as a Second Language Program. So I try to fund salaries partially instead with grants whenever possible.
And if we fund this and you do find the grant, you can return this money back to us at the end of the year.
Absolutely.
Okay. I, I do think a health specialist is very important to seniors. Um, and, and I, I don't think we should be cutting this, 'cause our seniors need, uh, a lot of care and, and time. So I, I do think this position would help down there. So, thank you for your time.
Any other questions?
Excuse with the customary thanks. What is the motion?
The motion is to. The motion is to reduce the salary lines from Department of Human Services by $30,000.
Do I have a second on that?
I second it.
I do have a second, so the motion is to reduce $30,000 from the salary line item at, I'm sorry, what department?
Human Services.
Human Services. Roll call.
Counselor Capone?
Yes.
Counselor Delasola?
No.
Counselor DeFlorio?
No.
Counselor Hamlin?
No.
Counselor McGonigal?
No.
Counselor McKinnon?
No.
Counselor Polatano?
No.
Counselor Sichetta?
Yes.
Counselor Sonny?
No.
Counselor Simonelli?
No.
Counselor Marquez? Two ayes, eight nays.
Two ayes, eight nays, the order has failed.
Madam Chairman, I only have one other proposed cut.
Sure.
It's to the Recreation Department. If you could please have a representative from the Recreation Department come before us.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Sam.
Good evening, thank you. And it's for the same exact reason. I think it's a good program, I think it makes a lot of sense, but there's got to be grants out there to grab the posters. I'd rather see us pursue a grant to fund this as opposed to, you know, a direct impact to the taxpayer. If you want to address that, that'd be great.
Sure. Kinda to echo what Ms. Lightburn had been saying, that we really need to be working on promoting health and education, and exercise, and nutrition. And with Carolyn, excuse me, Ms. Lightburn, working on nutrition and starting with seniors, we do a lot with families, so we see folks from cradle to grave, right? So Mrs. Lightburn is taking care of seniors, we're getting a lot of immigrant families that are coming within the community, coming to the rec center for information, and a lot of the times, we're already preoccupied with other things. So if we're able to provide another person that has these services or has the education that can share with the folks of Everett, I think we'd be better off. So we work, excuse me, as I mentioned the last time I was up here, we're working on offering more seminars on health and nutrition, kind of echoing what she's doing there, but with this particular position, we'd be looking to run more fitness classes.
Okay, and if we eliminated this position, we'd still have a rec supervisor, three rec leaders, four program assistants? Is that accurate?
No. We have three rec leaders and, yes, four program assistants, correct.
Okay, all right. So, no disrespect to you, because I know you work hard, and I know you're providing a great service, but I think that this is another program that's something we should be going after with grant money as opposed to funding it by the taxpayers. And that's why my motion is to reduce the salary lines by $35,000.
Counselor McKinnon?
Through you, Madam Chairwoman, to Mr. Amato. Mr. Amato, I'm down the rack all the time, I know what you guys do down there, and just the one individual alone that's down there, running basketball, volleyball, and then you got, he's doing classes at whatever, what time? Three?
Seven.
Seven? He's doing an incredible amount of work. So, I applaud you for that, that's, that's great down there. This position, is it needed to actually, what are we gonna be doing with this position?
So, if I can answer that, and in this position, you know, definitely will help the immigrant population, but also will help all the residents of the city of Everett. It is, as you said, a lot of the people down there now already have their roles, and they're, they're doing, if it's working with toddlers, working with the seniors down there, working in the summer program, if it's working the basketball, it's evolved from the old days of just being a basketball gym. We have zumba, we have dance, we have yoga. This person will be working on, would be working on weight training, and not only weight training for young kids, but for seniors, for, you know, for those who have issues with osteoporosis, and hand-in-hand with the nutritionist down at the Conley Center. What I'm trying to do is, through Energize Everett, through our health and wellness, we have a lot of people that work on health and wellness, and I'm trying to put them all together under one umbrella. We have people from the school department working on it, we have people from City Hall working on it, the rec department working on it, health, the human services, but this, this particular person, we'll work with, not only Coach Dib in the high school, but work with Carolyn down at the Conley Center, but work with Sam, but we run in programs, teaching people how to exercise appropriately, doing morning bootcamps for people, working with the nutritionist that we're gonna hire, making sure that people know how to eat right, and they, that, a lot of people think by not eating, you'll lose weight. That's a misconception. You know, I read, I read the last three years, four years now, the reports from Cameron Child Alliance, and they are, they are alarming, just the amount of obesity that we have, not only just kids, but adults here in the city, and I'm one of them, right? So, I battled it my whole life, and, and I know a guy like Richard Delasola who's up every morning at 5:00 AM and at the gym working out, that's why he looks the way he does. So this person will be working with people to get them living a more active lifestyle. And I talked about this, it's just a small amount of money. Businesses, for instance, hotel operators, companies, look at the health and wellness of communities. They look at community hospitals in their reports, and they say, do we really wanna move our manufacturing facility here? Do we wanna bring our company here to this community where most people are actually not healthy? Gonna cost us a lot of money in health insurance. So this is the start of something that I would like to evolve into something bigger, and hopefully that we'll all take advantage of, all of us here, from me to the oldest council here, I don't know who that is, could be maybe Councilman McGonigal these days, he's looking, he's looking a lot older. But, you know, I know when I was doing what Richard does now, I was, my life was the happiest. I was feeling great, more energy, and I've actually done it with my employees, and some of my employees are actually doing great. You know, a guy like David Rodriguez, you know, he's been actively working out, and I see his level of energy has gotten a lot better with work. The city's, actually the Sussos offices, they both, they're both, you know, taking advantage of the program we have in the city. The members down at the police department using the gym and act on a daily basis. I know, I know even Sam himself is a role model to lots of kids, you know, what he's done with his life, turned his life around, getting healthier. So this is the kind of stuff that I wanna do. I really wanna try to work with more residents now, getting them, this person will actively seek out people, will, you know, talk to residents when they see them. I see a lot of, you know, people, you know, not eating healthy, and this is all kind of working together. This person will not just be doing weight training, but will teach people about, you know, body mass index, about eating right, about the importance of water and drinking water, it's all, it's all a combination. And my goal, as you all know, I think, is to really get this facility up in the old high school, get it up and running, hopefully we'll get that license and we'll be able to do it easily, but that's my plan for the old high school gym, to keep, make that a health and wellness center for the community. And I think you'd be happy with the results. Yeah, Sam, of course you can.
Just wanted to kind of touch base on the resistance training part that Mr. Mayor had mentioned. I don't know how often you guys hit the gym, but resistance training can be a little scary for some folks. Some folks like sticking to machines, others like using dumbbells, others don't even like using weight at all, they like using their own body weight. But you need to know how to use it, and if you don't do it the right way, there's a lot of ways you can hurt yourself. We'd be preventing a lot of injuries, and I'm sure that the chiropractors and the joint specialists in the city wouldn't be very happy with this, but I'm totally okay with that. We wanna build a healthier city, and through this position, I think we'd get a lot done.
Thank you.
Any other, any other questions?
Excuse with the customary thanks. Thank you gentlemen for appearing. What is your pleasure, Counselor?
Motion is to cut $35,000 from the salaries line.
Salaries line item at the rec center, is that correct? Do I have a second on that?
Second.
I do have a second, roll call.
Counselor Capone?
Yes.
Counselor Delasola?
No.
Counselor DeFlorio?
No.
Counselor Hamlin?
No.
Counselor McGonigal?
No.
Counselor McKinnon?
No.
Counselor Polatano?
No.
Counselor Sichetta?
Yes.
Counselor Sonny? Counselor Simonelli?
No.
Two ayes, seven nays.
Two ayes, seven nays, the order has failed.
Move to revert back to regular order of business?
One minute, we have to accept, I will take a motion to accept the committee report and place on file.
No, I have another cut I wanna make.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Councilmen?
Go ahead.
Yes, I feel that we don't need a person in the mayor's or the city hall at over $1,000 a week as a greeter, so I make a motion to cut 58,000.
There's two people, there's two people that are splitting that salary, is that right?
I wanna cut $58,000 from the mayor's budget.
On that point...
I make a motion to do that. The motion before us to cut 58,000 from the salary line of the mayor's budget. Do I have a second out there?
On that point, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I don't know, that was the question, we didn't know if we could, and we had, we wouldn't have the city solicitor before us to explain that.
You can. So the motion before is to cut 58,000 from the mayor's salary line. Do we have a second on that?
I'd second it.
Second, Counselor Capone. Clerk, roll call vote. Counselor Capone?
Yes.
Counselor Delasola?
No.
Counselor DeFlorio?
No.
Counselor Hamlin? Counselor McGonigal?
No.
Counselor McKinnon?
No.
Counselor Polatano?
Yes.
Counselor Sichetta?
Yes.
Counselor Sonny?
No.
Counselor Simonelli?
Yes.
Counselor Marquez?
No. I like the idea of having people that speak different languages meet you when you come to the city.
Five ayes.
If it was one position, I may have...
Five ayes, six nays, Mr. President. Position that stays on the mayor's salary line.
Make a motion to pass the budget with the sole cuts.
Hold it, do we, what's the cuts there? Motion is to accept the budget as submitted minus, as amended minus the... What number is that, that's number 16? Yes. So would you like to read that? The salary, only one passed, which was $85,000 from the salary line item in city services. Now I gotta do math now. I was told there would be no math. We have, Rosa, what's that? Counsel, what is that? Rosa, what is that? Final? 680 at the bottom, and, yeah. Yes, you're right, that's, you're correct, yeah. 448, 680.
765?
It's gotta be right.
363, 196?
Yeah, what?
I have 15, I have 15,363,000. 285,000.
Yeah, that's a million.
153,377,000. No, I'm sorry, I left the zero off. For final, oh, 15,363,000.
154,000.
15,360, wrong one.
Yeah, could you, Rich?
Okay, Rich, come, come earn your pay.
Motion made, second to invite Mr. Viscay up. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Mr. Viscay, you have your final figure here.
If I may, 154,568,851 minus 85,000 would give you 154,483,851.
We have on our, we have a different number on our paper.
Take it from page 16, number 16.
154, 363, 936.
Should be 154, 363, 763, is that what you have? I broke out a pen, I said, okay, I'll do it.
363, 936, 154, 363. Maybe this is wrong, but that's what we rely on.
No, it should be, it's, the only budget cut that came out was 85,000, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, so if we take 154,448,765, and we knock out 85,000, we should be 154,363,765. Okay, my math teacher's fifth grade would be very happy with me.
I have a private of the council.
But you have a calculator with you.
Sorry.
Motion, motion to accept, yeah, motion to pass the budget as amended, roll call vote. Counselor Capone?
Yes.
Counselor Delasola?
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counselor Hamlin?
Yes.
Counselor McGonigal?
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon? Counselor Polatano?
Yes.
Counselor Sichetta? Counselor Sonny?
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli?
Yes.
Counselor Marquez?
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon?
Yes.
Ten ayes, zero nays, Mr. President. Counselors accepted the budget for year 2015.
No.
Now, we done here? Rosa, do we have any other piece on there? Counselor Florio, do we have anything else? Now clerk, please read the, you have this? You need this?
We did those, we did that. I have a five, an order sponsored by Counsel Michael Marquez, his president, chief procurement officer has hereby granted permission to award the following three contracts for a term of five years, including extension, one, future education, two-year contract with three, one-year renewal options, Aramark, one-year contract for four, one-year renewal options, and for kids only, one-year contract for four, one-year renewal options.
Babel action on the order?
Excuse me, before we vote on this, do we, what is, this is for the schools?
If we could please have the procurement officer...
Yes.
...invite us to explain what this is, because I have no idea what this is.
Motion made to invite the procurement officer up here. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Hi, how are you?
Hello?
Could you please explain what exactly this is?
Sure. These are according to state law in our charter, we're only allowed to have contracts for three years unless we have city council approval, so the three contracts that come before you are all for the school department. So the first is futures education, and it's a program for special needs students, and the second, that is exempt from 30B, so we didn't go out to bid. The second is Aramark, which is our food service management program, and we just put that out to bid, and they were, they were awarded the contract. And then the third is for kids only, and it's the after-school program for all of the public schools.
I don't have any other questions.
Babel action on the order?
Excuse me one second on the, on the motion. These all go out, they go out to bid and everything?
Yeah, except the first one, except the one that applies to the special needs students, that's exempt from chapter 30B. So the other two did go out to bid.
All right, do we have, Counselor Hamlin?
Thank you, thank you. I'm looking at the three contracts for a term of five years. Are we allowed to do a five-year contract?
Well, you, as I said in the beginning, you're only allowed to do a three, more than a three-year contract if you get city council approval. So these are technically, they're not for a total of five years, they're for one year or for two years, and then with the options to renew, so they might not even reach the five years.
Okay.
But each one of them, when it does go out to bid, is such an involved process that the school department...
Okay, okay. My second part of that question is...
And they already have the prayer range cost also, don't they?
Yes.
Yeah. My second part of that question was, I thought we could only give a one-year renewal.
You could, unless you have city council approval. And then you'd be able to go in excess of three years.
Thank you very much. How's your day?
Good.
Uh, we have a motion, no, before us.
Move, excuse the customary thanks.
Excuse the, uh, customary thanks.
Fable action?
Second. Motion made. Second, fable action. Uh, roll call vote.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Counsel Delasola.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon.
Yes.
Counsel McGonigal.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel Polatano.
Yes.
Counsel Sichetta.
Yes.
Counsel Sani.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli.
Yes.
Counsel Marquez.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
Let me see if those were granted to, uh...
Mr. President, we suspend the rules to take number nineteen, excuse me, number twenty and nineteen concerning the mayor.
Motion made to suspend the rules to take item nineteen and twenty.
Twenty-first and nineteenth.
Uh, let's take item number twenty. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Clerk, read item twenty.
Item number twenty, residents sponsored by Counsel Steve Simonelli and Counsel John Lamb-Mckinnon, mayor and city solicitor, respectfully request the attendance meeting to explain why no opt-out provision and no compliance will shut off your water with regards to the water meter radio frequency device.
We invite the mayor and the city solicitor, please.
I'd like to make a motion, invite the mayor and the city solicitor before us. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Evening, mayor, city solicitor.
You know, at first, I never thought I'd like this area, but I think I like this better than seeing them, but, yeah.
Uh, Counsel Simonelli.
Okay, uh, thank you. To you, Mr. Chairman, to the, to the mayor. First of all, I'd like to know, how far along are we in the process of installing these water meters?
Yeah, we're, uh, I think we have a very, I almost said ninety-five percent, I think is, is the number I'm hearing.
Motion made to invite Mr. Marquardt up. All in favor? Oppose? Mr. Marquardt?
We're about, excuse me, we're about ninety-seven percent complete. There's a little seven hundred and low change left over.
My second question...
Mr. Marquardt, I'd like to sit down and use the other microphone.
Thank you. Uh, J. Marquardt, Director of City Services, we're ninety-seven percent complete with the water meter project, and there's seven hundred and, I want to say there's thirty-one meters left to be installed.
Thank you. And my second question is, uh, how many residents refuse to comply with this, put this, put this meter in?
Uh, I don't know if it's refused, but we haven't, we haven't received any communication from about twenty?
Some, about, about a dozen have refused.
About a dozen have refused.
That does. Doesn't so. Okay, and second question, I guess we refer to the city solicitor. Is it true that if the people don't comply with this, is, they can, you, the city can actually shut the water off in a, in a person's house?
In the ordinances under the water department, um, there is language in there that says that failure to adhere to any of the provisions, the city has the authority to terminate water service.
We, we've had some people who have brought us some documentation regarding, um, uh, you know, issues with the meters being read electronically.
The radio frequency.
Radio frequency, and we've accepted their letters, and we have changed their meter to a, um, not the one that it read electronically, but the, it's a new meter, but it's the old hard-wired meters. We just did that recently with one person.
It's just a mechanical system, which we...
Right. It's mechanical. It's back to the mechan... So if someone provides us with a doctor's letter that they do not want that...
Well, if they don't have a doctor's letter, they say they just don't want it.
Well, that's the program. We, we...
So you're gonna shut the people's water off. They're gonna come after you, Mr. Mayor. That's all I'm saying.
I just let you know, we probably have, um, we probably settled with three or four people recently and collected about a million dollars in water, water rates, people who are...
It doesn't matter, excuse me.
Who are disconnecting their water meters.
If it's just one person, they're gonna shut their water off. You can't do that. I don't care what the law says. And you even mentioned it earlier. You wouldn't want to shut nobody's water off?
No, we, we wouldn't want to do that, no.
Well, then, then what's the ruling?
Uh, we would make every attempt to get to the property owner. And that's what we're doing now, actually. Uh, the, the people that we have not been able to reach or that refused, we are actually trying to reach them and talk to them again. Call them, knocking on their doors.
And, uh, but, okay, but, uh, they're gonna be coming after you, leaving this, that one person, because, uh, you are the mayor. My second question, why there's no opt-out provision in this way, the resident could say, I don't want it, or upfront, before you even had installed this thing, upfront, saying, we don't want, I don't want, I want to keep it in, uh, the old hard wire?
Well, that's why, I mean, I mean...
Why wasn't there an opt-out provision to start with, like some, like some cities have?
I, I don't know if anyone had an opt-out, uh, program, but the reason why we did it was because of the high number of, uh, abatements and the issues with the meters and, um, you know, to cut out the factor of our meter readers having to go over the properties and read them, and that wasn't really working out too good for us over the years. So, uh, this is, uh, you know, it's being done, uh, over, throughout the country, in all different towns. Um, it's, it's a better system. It's more accurate. Uh, it's, uh, yeah, safe. It, it's gonna make sure residents are paying their, inaccurate for their water. Some residents were actually, with the old system, you know, may have, some paid too little, and some might have even paid, overpaid maybe. I don't know, to be true. But these meters are more accurate. They will talk to us and let us know if meters are being disconnected, if there's a change in the amount of water being used. It signals us, sends us an email, lets us know that something is happening at this address on this property. So, so we can go out and send a technician. We don't have to wait for a resident to call us. Uh, there'll be no more estimated readings. There'll be all accurate bills. It's a better system.
But it, but, uh, no question, why this health reasons, there's some people hack, could hack into this thing. You got them on schools, and it's still not proven that it causes cancer. It's not proven that it isn't, and it's not proven that it is. And, and you put these things on, on two elementary schools. That's another part of it. I don't think you added, you did...
You want us to answer that question?
Sorry, is this on? I have done several presentations, um, based on the, the, what you just said, that it causes cancer. There is no significant data that proves that that...
Either way.
No, it's from the American Cancer Society.
They're still doing research, I'm sure.
I, I had, I had it in the presentation twice. The American Society said there's no conclusive evidence that water meters cause cancer, and that's coming straight from the American Cancer Society.
Well, the Department of Public Utilities, the guy, the gentleman was here, Mr. Davis, and he said they're still investigating, they're still investigating the...
What, what he told you he was investigating was a completely different system for the gas meter. That's exactly what he said. The water meters are pretty much flawless. There's no concerns as far as EMF amittals or, or whatever. The, the, what we have presented to you is a safe, reliable product that, in an effort to streamline government, to make us more efficient, this is the best product out there.
I understand that, but you, you know, just because you say that, there's some people that could be affected by this, and I don't think it was presented right.
We also had the discussion that, and we showed you the chart, that the cell phone you have on your, on your side right now is a thousand or ten thousand times worse.
I see the chart. Anybody, anybody can make up a chart. Anybody can make up a chart. And the second, go, anyway, with all due respect. Uh, next one I wanted to bring up is, say if a person wants to take this, take this out because of the radio frequency, they want it out, will the, the resident have to pay for the service to take it out, or would the city pay for it?
There, there is no taking out the service.
What do you mean? If you don't, you decide you don't want it because it may be...
So are you telling us that we should be giving free water to that person that doesn't want it?
Excuse me?
That we should be giving free water to people that don't want it?
Free water?
Because how are we gonna monitor it?
You end up shutting the water off. Of course. I mean, the people who are paying taxes here. It, to me, it's, this wasn't presented right, and the issues weren't, it seemed like you've done it, and then before the, before the facts were really presented. And I think a lot of people out there get to a point where they, they think they weren't, they weren't doing the, the right information from the start. And I'm, I'm just glad I bring it up. I made it aware to the people what's going on, and they should have had to make their own decisions, not by putting it in and then try to take it out, which you can't. And you can't shut nobody's water off. So if you want to do it, they'll come after you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All right, Counsel McKinnon.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to, um, the city solicitor. Is there any known litigation right now that you know of that's out there currently with any cities, such as Worcester, uh, for say, that, uh, they are going through now that may actually end up, uh, resulting in an opt-out program?
I haven't done any research on any kind of litigation, but if you know of any, then, and if you'd like me to look into it, you can refer to my department, and I'm glad to look at it.
Yeah, reason why I, I'll just tell you, because the reason why I ask, I know that there was a, a piece of litigation that was going on in Worcester, I believe, and there was a gentleman here that testified one night and said that they were waiting for a judgment to come down. And as soon as that judgment came down, I wanted to know whether or not if it was an opt-out or they were on the other side, so...
Was it for water meters?
I don't know if it was for water meters or for gas meters or what it was, but I believe it was, I wa, I believe it was for some type of meter that reads digitally or reads through radio waves or whatever. So, um, if we could get that research done.
I'd be happy to follow the case for you.
Yeah, just to see if, you know, how that came out, because the gentleman said they were coming out with a judgment, like fairly soon. So if they do have an opt-out program in Worcester, we should possibly maybe venture into the, looking at it at least for our customers here.
Again, you, this project is, as Jay pointed out, is ninety-seven percent complete, so it's, we're almost done.
Okay, but we should still have the ones that, that twenty people there, I have to agree with Councilman Simonelli on this point, we shouldn't shut their water off. We should actually say, okay, there should be a mechanism in place where they can opt out and say, okay, we'd like this mechanical device instead of the water radioactive, whatever they are, the rays, uh, whatever they are, bands, we'll call them.
It's definitely not radioactive.
What, whatever it is, radio frequency. Sorry, it's getting late, so I'm radioactive, I guess. But, um, that, that right there would be a good study to actually take a look at, because there was, uh, Councilman Hanlon had a letter from one of our constituents that stated that there was a medical issue, a medical problem with that. So it just gives an option for them.
What I, I know my chief of staff worked on this issue, but what I'm gonna do is maybe do some more, um, press on it. I'll have Allison do some more press to residents about the, the meters and, uh, all of maybe the issues that you talked, yeah, all the issues that you maybe have brought up and, uh...
That, that, just the judgment.
Do some more, uh, sometimes communications to relieve people of, uh, their, their worries. So we can definitely get some more information out.
Yeah.
Let them know that they're safe.
That's fine, that's fine by me. And I'd like to know the, just if that case was actually judged upon.
Mr. Marquardt is saying it was a, this gas meter, but we will definitely look into that, and, uh, I don't want people at home to think that we put something in their home that's harmful, or we have these...
That, that's not the case at all, Mr. Mayor. What I'm just saying is, like, maybe we should have an opt-out. That's all.
Unfortunately, the people that, you know, just the people that aren't answering back to us, just not even answering us. You know, the, the woman who had some issues regarding the, uh, you know, the, um, the meter itself, she was able to provide us with a doctor's letter and, uh, I think, yes, you know, so we were able to assist her and get her a new meter that's gonna be read, um, by a, by a meter reader. Go.
My mate, my friend.
Thank you. Uh, Counsel Hanlon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'm sure you understand that I like to read law books and the law of Massachusetts general law and everything, and you had indicated that our ordinance indicates that, uh, according to a Massachusetts general law, they can shut off our water. That's...
No, what I said was, in the ordinances, it says that failure to adhere to any of the provisions within that water ordinance can result in termination of water services.
It also says that in their, in compliance with the Massachusetts general law. That's where they get it from. And I forget the number of the law, but I know there's a D, and the letter D was in it. And I read that law. And that law says that a person of proper, proper identification, so on and so forth, can enter into a home to check a meter, to fix, put a new one in, and so on and so forth. I read it, and I interpret it to be as a repair to a broken meter. And I think the law was put in there to fix a broken meter, also to get people that were stealing water. So, and, and I think that was the whole reason. But nowhere in that general law does it say you can shut off the water. So if, with, our ordinance says according to that, you can shut off the water, there's nothing in that law that says you can shut off the water, the water. And I, you quoted that law to me. That's where I got it from. Did you tell me it was, yeah, didn't you tell me it was a, like you said?
I believe M.I.I. was the one that was quoting that law, and also the project manager, Peter Barozzi, um, who's not here tonight. He's the one that quoted that law. I want to say it's Massachusetts law thirty-five, section thirty-five, um...
I'm not sure what it was, what it was.
He also mentioned in that, um, there was also several of the criteria with water shut off, uh, you know, not payment, no payment or non-payment, um, tampering, you know, laundry list of, of items, not just the two that you mentioned.
But I, I, I tripped that law to being as not putting in new meters, but to check a, a broken meter, to go in and look at a meter and fix a meter, and to find out what's wrong with it. That's, that's what I, that's what I looked at. And, uh, so I'm, I'm agreeing with, with Counsel Simonelli that you can't shut off anyone's water based on what we were just talking about. Thank you.
Uh, Counsel Polatano.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, um, first of all, I was glad to hear that you said you accepted some letters from some folks, uh, who, and you were able to put in mechanical meters for them? Right, right. Were these medical letters for the most part? They were. They were. Okay. So the only thing I'd like to see is, I'd like to see something put in the ordinance that, that allows for a person who has a medical issue. Because, you know, your administration, you're being flexible with this, and that, I'm glad to hear that. You know, somebody else might take a hard line at somewhere down the road. And I think to have a provision where a person can, can, can produce a doctor's letter or medical evidence that they're, that they're affected by the meter would be justification for switching to a mechanical. Okay? And that's, that's all I'd be looking for in this. That's, thank you.
Any more questions? Customer, uh, excuse me, customer, thanks.
Excuse the customary thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A motion?
Make a motion to just, uh, refer it to the mayor's office and for him to give us periodically updates on, uh, on what's, what the, we're talking here, radio frequencies. We're not talking...
So the motion's made, we're gonna send it to the mayor's office.
Just refer to the mayor.
Motion made, second, to send us to the mayor's office. All in favor, and to get, um, quarterly updates, maybe on the, uh...
It's the, uh, radio frequency. We're not talking about the water meter. The water meter's fine.
And also to send it to, uh, the city solicitor with a report back on that city that I stated.
And also to send it to the, uh, city solicitor with a report. Uh, all in favor? Oppose? Uh, clerk, uh, number nineteen, motion made, and, uh, suspend the rules and take item nineteen. Motion made, second, to take item number nineteen. All in favor? Oppose?
Item number nineteen, residents sponsored by Counsel Michael, Michael Marquez, to request the mayor, Piers, being the city council, explains responsibility according to the charter. When he is out of city, explain to the mayor's position, full-time, part-time, position according to the charter.
Well, we know it's a full-time job. The second part is, what is the information that's supposed to be provided? Uh, motion made, invite the mayor up here.
If you would like to refer by the sponsor, I'll be fine with it. I know you were frustrated one day with me, and you put it on the calendar.
No, no, all, all I'm, all I'm gonna ask is, how come we're, we're never notified that when you're out of town? That's all. I, I thought that the, the present, uh, um, council president would be notified with a letter that when you're out of town, notifying you of your duties. I, I, is that not on the charter? I don't, I'm not sure. Um, I've never received a letter in, uh, six months from the office if you were out of town or whatever. And that's all. Is it part of the charter? Motion made to like, uh, you know, to, uh, invite Mr. Murphy to the, uh, count, second?
My understanding of the charter is that we need to contact you if the mayor is not available. At no time in the past six months have the mayor been not available. He's always accessible via cellphone, um...
Oh, so that's the law, cellphone is brought into it. I don't think that's part of the charter.
It says if he's not available, the mayor is constantly available.
Well, if he's not here, you're supposed to have, you're not supposed to say anything in writing that the mayor's out of town.
If he's, if, the charter specifically says if he's out of town and not available. At no time has he been not available to the city of ever.
That's a kind of a very wide interpretation.
That's what it says.
Well, I mean, I just think after, I don't know how long we've been there, a hundred and something years, I just, I just don't understand where you're, you're coming from there.
Mr. President, I...
Unless you want to be mayor when he's not here. But I mean, I'm, I'm not sure. I'm not gonna get into it.
I will definitely notify you, Mr. Mr. President.
That's all. Just a little bit of respect that we've had the past couple hundred years. I think, forget about the cellphone thing.
I agree with the respect part.
That's all. And that's, that's all I wanted to ask. I just want to see if that was part of the charter. That's a quick question. I don't want to get into it with anybody, but don't, please don't give me an excuse about the cellphone thing. Please. That's all. And that's, that's... And that's, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Refer back to sponsor.
Motion made, second to refer back to sponsor, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Wait. Go back to regular order.
Yep, motion made to report to regular order, all in favor? I oppose. Number seven.
Item number seven, order sponsored by Council Mike Marquesi's present to accept donation of $1,000 from Senator Saldivio Medical to Department of Baptist Services account.
Favorable action and send a letter, thanks.
Motion made, second to send, to accept the donation, also to send a letter to our senate, which is a very generous roll call vote.
Council Capone.
Yes.
Council Delasola.
Yes.
Council DeFlorio.
Yes.
Council Hanlon.
Yes.
Council McKinnon.
Yes.
Council Polatano.
Yes.
Council Sichata.
Yes.
Council Sani.
Yes.
Council Simonelli.
Yes.
Council Marquesi.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays, Mr. President.
We have accepted a generous donation from the state senate. Clerk, read number eight.
Item number eight, an order sponsored by Council Mike Marquesi's present transfer $410,521 from the mayor reserve account into the following city accounts. Transfer is necessary to fund personnel services in various departments mainly due to the settlement of the F Y Union, F Y 14 union contracts into these departments. Auditor salary $350, assistant salary $17,650, solicitor salary $182, human resource, human resources salary $6,250, registrar salaries $1,841, fire salary $122,403, ISD salary $10,000, parking salary $12,015, city services salary $2027,400, veteran salary $900, human services salary $11,530, totaling $410,521.
Fable action on the order?
From the mayor's reserve, to those.
Suspend rule 13.
You don't need to, you have to suspend.
Suspend rule 13, favorable action on the order.
Yeah, motion made, second to suspend rule 13, favorable action. Do we have any questions on this?
It, it looks like it's self-explanatory, it says it's a result of union contracts, so there's really not much we can do with it. On the someone, yes?
Council Delasola.
Yes.
Council DeFlorio.
Yes.
Council Hanlon.
Yes.
Council McGonigal.
Yes.
Council McKinnon.
Yes.
Council Polatano.
Yes.
Council Sichata.
Yes.
Council Sani.
Yes.
Council Simonelli.
Yes.
Council Marquesi.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays.
The order is passed. Clerk, read row number nine.
Item number nine, order sponsored by Council Mike Marquesi's present transfer $400,000 from health insurance fund into the following city accounts. Transfer is necessary to fund unanticipated increases during the fiscal year in these general extension counts. Employee injuries $150,000, electricity and gas $150,000, telephone $50,000, employee buyback $30,000, advertising $20,000, for a total of $400,000.
Suspend rule 13. Motion made to suspend rule 13, all in favor?
Aye.
What's that?
Is that $150,000?
$150,000?
$150,000.
Well, you have, what's electricity and gas, what's, what do you have, employee injuries 150?
Oh, this is correct.
It's $150,000.
The letter is correct.
Okay.
I'll read it from the, from the mayor's letter. It's, uh, gas, electric, $150,000.
Thank you.
The mayor's letter, the order.
Fable action on the order?
Second, the motion.
On the motion?
Motion made, second, roll call vote.
On the motion.
On the motion.
If we could please have the city auditor before us.
Motion made, second to invite Mr. Biscay before us, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Biscay?
Thank you, Mr. Biscay. The, we're taking $400,000 from the health insurance fund to pay employee injuries, electricity, gas, telephones, buyback. What is the main function of the health?
Insurance fund.
Insurance fund?
Sure, I think, I'm sorry if it's a little misleading, the health insurance fund isn't the trust fund, it's the appropriation line from the operating budget that funds the city's share of health insurance costs. And the transfers are being made from there because we had some estimates on head counts for fiscal year 14, and we had some estimates on the activity it was gonna be for that, and we find ourselves in a surplus situation, so, as opposed to using many different accounts to fund these shortfalls in other budgets, I tried to make it simple and use this budget because it's a large number, and I was able to address all of the transfers that were needed with the surplus from the health insurance appropriation. It's not the, it's not the city's trust fund for health insurance.
Okay, it's a separate.
It's the city's, it's the city's $17.8 million appropriation that, the good news is that we're running very favorably, again, with the trust and with the appropriation, so this dollars are available for me to help do the year-end cleanup of the books.
Okay, I, I thought it was trust fund.
I know. It worked a little, it was a little deceiving.
Okay, and, and so the $150,000 electricity and gas, I know our expenses are high, with the $30,000 contribution to the employee buyback, I know that we established this fund, I think we funded it to $200,000, is that what we did recently?
Yes, we established that and appropriated $200,000. I was planning on using that for the fiscal year 15 start, to start fresh. This is just a matter of, we had a couple of more firefighters retire, so you recall you appropriated some money to supplement this fund, but now we're at the end of the year, and we're just about $30,000 short to close the year, so what I'd like to do is use the health insurance appropriation to fund this, and then fiscal year 15, we start with the fresh trust and kind of use that, that particular fund to do fiscal year 15 buybacks.
So, when we go forward in fiscal year 2015 with the employee buybacks, are we starting with a balance of 200, or are we using that?
No, that's, that would be the plan, we'd have.
So, the 30 washes out, and then it'd be 200 when we start up?
Start fresh with $200,000 for fiscal year 15, correct.
Good, that, that was my question. All right, I have no other questions, thank you.
If I may ask a quick question, Mr. Biscay, so, you know, just looking at like eight, nine, and 10, there's almost $1.2 million. Now, is this part of the old budget or part of our new budget going forward?
This is all just cleaning up the books for fiscal year 14 so that.
So, this is 1.2 from last year budget, I mean.
Yeah, it's basically, you appropriated $400,000 for salary reserve account, so we wanted a way to close it of fiscal year so we can make sure that the dollars that are appropriate to each account were as accurate as possible.
So, this is accurate, so this is all gonna be consumed by these bills, or it could be?
Yeah, for the most part, we're just waiting for these appropriations, and in some cases, like utilities, we have to pay them, so we find ourselves in deficit situations, but all these transfers will essentially put us in the black on all these accounts, and we're able to close it out with no deficits in the, in any particular accounts that are listed.
All right, thank you. Do we have a motion here?
Fable action.
Second motion.
We already had the, did it suspend it? No.
No, no, the order is, the order is correct. It may be incorrect on the.
Yeah, but $150,000. Motion made, and second, favorable action, roll call vote.
Council Capone.
Yes.
Council Delasola.
Yes.
Council DeFlorio.
Yes.
Council Hanlon.
Yes.
Council McGonigal.
Yes.
Council McKinnon.
Yes.
Council Polatano.
Yes.
Council Sichata.
Yes.
Council Sani.
Yes.
Council Simonelli.
Yes.
Council Marquesi.
Yes.
Eleven yeas, zero nays.
You have confirmed the transfer of $412,597. Nope, excuse me, $40,000.
Item number 10, is an order sponsored by Council Mike Marquesi's present transfer $412,597 from budgetary fund balance into the following city accounts. Transfer is necessary to fund personnel services used during the fiscal year in both departments as due to union increases put in effect on 7/1/14 and the number of wintry weather plowing, salting incidents done by city services. City services overtime $175,000, fire salary $102,597, fire overtime $135,000, totaling $412,597.
Suspend rule 13. Motion made to suspend rule 13, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, Mr. Councilor Hanlon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is the date on this correct, 7/1/14? This is due to a union increase put into effect on 7/1/14?
No, it should be 7/1/13.
By what?
Should be 7/1/13.
Oh, okay.
Sorry about that.
Okay.
7/1/14 will be next fiscal year.
That answers all my other questions. Thank you.
Councilor Capone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to Mr. Biscay. Most of this, it's really two line items of overtime, and this looks like it goes hand in hand with the union contracts. Is that correct?
Yes, essentially, and the fire salary portion is basically the difference of what we needed in the mayor's reserve salary account and what was available, so we used up all of the mayor's salary reserve account, and this fire salary is kind of making up that difference.
Okay, so when we pull this $412 out of free cash, where are we at for balance down free cash? We at 3.2? 3.2?
No, no. We're at, we'd be at $56,000.
$56,000.
So, just to extrapolate that a little bit, not to get everybody too nervous, we've got $5.1 million certified in free cash this year, and we've put 44% of that free cash into reserve accounts. We've given 17% of that money back to the schools. We've invested 26% of that money into our capital improvement plan. Basically, budget transfers and such have only made up 12% of the entire free cash, so if someone looks at the 5.1 million, just want to let the people at home know that most of this money was put towards capital improvements, reserve accounts, and funding the schools, so at this point, with these transfers, I don't foresee that we would need any further action to close out the fiscal year.
Okay.
And the hope is that, to hopefully avoid a July meeting to do some more transfers, so at this point, what I've been doing, we paid out our warrants, we're looking at the budgets, and we're just trying to make sure that we're in the black on all the accounts. Right now, the only thing I see in the deficit is the snow and ice account, which we typically have on a bad winter, and we'll address that with the recap of fiscal year 15.
Okay, so after this transfer, you're saying there'll be about $56,000 in free cash?
$56,484.
Okay.
And if we don't expend that money, that'll close out and be part of next year's certification.
Okay, thank you, I have no other questions.
Councilor Hanlon. Thank you. Mr. Biscay, will you just do those numbers again for me, starting with the 5.1 million, I think you said?
Sure, 5.1, in round numbers, 5.1 million was certified. We put $2.3 million into various reserve accounts, with the other post-employment benefit trust account, stabilization account, employee buyback stabilization, and the capital improvement stabilization. We put $871,000, last meeting was voted to the schools, supplement their budget.
That's okay, that's all right. I think it said 4.4 billion, you said 2.2 billion?
44%, 2.25 million, was 44% of the total free cash, yep.
Okay. Any more questions? It's not, one quick question.
Excuse the customary, thanks.
Mr. Biscay, the $175,000, all these overtime things, these are additional to what we had on the budget last year, aren't they? City services, overtime?
Yes, sir.
So, we're looking at, we spent probably about $400,000 overtime, not $300 last year, maybe?
That's correct.
So, what we can expect, even though we had $300,000, we budgeted this year, there's a good chance we'll go to half a million?
We, we don't.
I know you can't say it.
Not to beat the, you know, we talked about it in general, we're trying to address overtime costs citywide through Everett Stat.
Yep.
And by hiring a business manager and trying to get people in place.
But like I said, with us, our fire, all the stuff that we approve here, we spend substantially more money than at the end pull it back out, that's what's happening here.
That's correct.
So, even $100,000 that Mr. Capone, Council Capone, wouldn't have really been a debt in anything.
Yeah, that, that's correct.
All right. No more questions, Mr. Biscay, thank you very much. Matters before you?
Fable action on the order?
Second, motion made, second favorable, favorable action, clerk.
Council Capone.
Yes.
Council Delasola.
Yes.
Council DeFlorio.
Yes.
Council Hanlon.
Yes.
Council McGonigal.
Yes.
Council McKinnon.
Yes.
Council Polatano.
Yes.
Council Sichata.
Yes.
Council Sani.
Yes.
Council Simonelli.
Yes.
Council Marquesi.
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays.
Fable action on the transfer. Clerk, which, number?
Item 12 and 13 can be taken collectively, referred back to the clerk, it shouldn't be on the agenda.
Motion made to take 12, the motion made to take 12 and 13 collectively, refer them back to the clerk, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, and refer back to the clerk. Clerk read item 14.
Item 14, it's communication from Police Chief Steven Maisy, pleased to announce that E.P.D. has applied for the Everett Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program through the Bureau of Justice Assistance. We've applied for funds in the amount of $17,901 in order to increase access to electronic control devices for police officers as an additional less-than-lethal force after when placing persons into custody. E.C.D. reduces the likelihood of injury to both the general public and officers during arrest.
Accept the communication, place on file. Motion made, the second, accept the communication, place on file, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, accept the communication, clerk read item number 16.
The community always means report on examination monthly bills submitted for review by the city auditor committee scheduled next meeting for Monday, the 14th of July at 6:00 P.M.
Well, excuse me. Accept the communication, place on file. Okay, accept the, accept the communication, place on file, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Clerk number 19.
Item number 18, an order sponsored by Council Peter Polatano.
Right, number 20. Wait, hold it, no, number 22, excuse me.
I got the right one?
Yeah, 22.
Complaining city council rules by adding the committee and/or special meetings not be scheduled before 6:00 P.M. to ensure maximum participation of the city councils. Be a further order to city council committee and/or special city council meetings not be scheduled at the same time.
Mr. Chairman, since we're not able to take orders on the same night we put them, I'd like to carry this over on our next meeting.
So, was that motion, what was the motion?
That's correct.
Motion made to lay down for our next meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, this has been sent to the next meeting, clerk read item 23.
Item number 23, order sponsored by Council Mike Marquesi's present pursuant to charter section 10, six, subsection 10, the revised order of the city of Everett is hereby amended by adding a new chapter 22(c)(code of ethics) for all municipal employees. Yep, refer to the next meeting.
Refer this to the next meeting?
Motion made, second, refer to next meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, clerk read item 24.
Item 24, order sponsored by Council Frank Capone, chapter 3, animal control, revised orders of the city of Everett is hereby deleted in its entirety and replaced with new section.
That also refer to the next meeting?
Motion made, and second, refer to next meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, refer to the next meeting, clerk read item 25.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, on items 22, 3, and 4, can we get a copy of, I'm sorry, not items 22, but 23 and 24, can we get a copy of the new ordinance?
Sure.
Okay, just sent to us so we can, you understand it.
Item number 25, is the state council maintenance request. Order sponsored by Council Frank Capone and Peter Polatano, traffic commission considered placing 115 minute parking spot in front of 379 Broadway, effective hours running until Friday 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Another one by Council Frank Capone, mayor's office, contact city waste disposal company discussing correct the problem of trash receptacles being placed in streets and middle sidewalk, walkways, following pickup. Orders for Peter Ray and Polatano, that Mr. Cameron, National Grid, for an updated progress remove double poles, by pending at the next meeting in September. Next one by Council Peter Ray and Polatano, representative for mayor's office, appear next meeting September 8, with an update on repairs to the original 911 memorial. Next one by Peter Polatano and Council and Frank Capone, that if crossing light, new crosswalk is installed in the intersection of Kelsey Street and Vine due to safety concerns of neighborhood. And six by Council Peter Polatano, the parking meters on Webster Street be adjusted to reflect the current one-way direction.
Council Polatano, is there like four of these that we could work on now and send it to our, you know, send it to the prospective departments? All of them?
The whole worksheet.
The whole worksheet.
Yeah, it's all worksheet.
We're wanting to see Mr. Cameron.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
For a long time, is what I'm saying.
I wanted a question on that.
Councilor Hanlon.
And it was just that on that, item number three, have we heard anything from him? Because I know he was here, one of his assistants were here, and we had indicated our displeasure over the two poles. I'm just wondering if we heard anything.
Council Polatano.
Yeah, if I, if I could, you know, I mean, be honest with you, we have, we have contractors coming up here, petitioning for a license from National Grid. It's great that we put them on the spot and we ask them those questions, but it's not their responsibility, it's not what they're up here for, and my belief that they would have relayed that information to Mr. Cameron is very, very unlikely. I figured it's a good idea to get the man himself up here, he's got all summer to get it, get everything together so we can get a report on the double poles, so we can actually get some answers. So, I wanted to invite him up here personally.
That's what, motion before us to further perspective of the department, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to.
Motion made, second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?